And the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please join me in prayer. Our Heavenly Father, as we come before The at this time, we do so with gratitude in our hearts for the blessings and privileges that we have been able to live in this great country and enjoy the freedoms that we have. We're grateful for the men and women who give their time and effort and the sacrifices in their families to protect our country and protect our rights and liberties here within our neighborhoods, within our families, within our homes. We ask special blessings upon these men and women and their families, wherever they may be, throughout the world as well as here. We're grateful for this opportunity to be able to make decisions and choices based on guidance at our communities. We pray for Thy direction and care as we do so in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. So, first item of business is called to the public. And consideration and discussion of comments from the public. Those wishing to address the Pinal County Board of Supervisors may appear in person or submit in writing, which shall be submitted to the clerk of the board by closed business hours, 5:00 PM, the day prior to the meeting. Comments shall be no more than 250 words. Actions taken as a result of the public comments will be limited to directing staff to study the matters or reschedule the matter for further consideration and discussion at a later date. Ms. Kennedy, I understa-- did you tell me you had one that had come in? We'll do the emailed one first, and then I will reach out to the audience.
Thank you, Chairman. Yes, the clerk of the board offices and receipt of one call to the public comment. And that comment is from Jane Spiegel from Oracle, Arizona. "Pinal County Health Department Grant" is the subject. "I understand that there may be an attempt to revisit the immunization services proposal, which was voted against by a majority of supervisors on September the 1st. If this should occur, I urge those who voted no to not change their votes. Having read the proposal, I believe it is designed to rein the county in and make Pinal County Health Services subservient for COVID issues to a contractor, an unelected COVID czar, executing what is clearly Washington's and Phoenix's agenda. What is the proof that minorities are so stressed that they are more vulnerable to COVID? That is the free word, stuff made up. I urge you to vote no if this comes up." Subject two, Pinal County BOS Ethics Committee. "I believe an ethics committee is an excellent idea. In the news, we see daily politicians around the country, on both sides of the aisle, that have conflicts of interest. Ethics 101 classes teach that appearance of any impropriety must be avoided at all cost. Conflicts of interest dilute the credibility of elected public servants, impacting confidence in our government and concerns that is not we, the people, who are first and foremost in their minds. I urge you to establish an ethics committee. Done right, it will instill even more confidence in the Pinal County BOS. Thank you for the opportunity to share my views. I hope you will take them into account as you make your decisions." And that is the only comment that the clerk of the board office has received, Chairman.
Thank you, Natasha. Okay. Anyone from the audience like to address the Board of Supervisors? Okay, let's be orderly, and we'll start with Mary. I'll do this side of the room first, and then I'll come and do this side of the room.
Good morning, Chairman Miller and the board. Despite the media's headlines this week that the Arizona audit revealed no fraud, the analysis provided last Friday in a presentation in the Senate chamber included data, mail-in ballots, signature process, and cyber issues, largely ignored by the media. These revealed major problems with the 2020 election, which, as we head into another election, raises huge integrity issues going forward. I have with me today printed out just a few of the problems revealed in the audit. I have also provided the website, which I can leave with you. I'll give it to the clerk to complete the-- for the complete report. I am sure this board is interested in these results and hopefully did not put much credence to what is being reported in the media, print, and video. They ignore the evidence and focus only on the count. Calling this year-long effort a count is pure spin. Based on the findings and evidence presented on September 24th, there has been a referral to the Attorney General's Office for prosecution of criminal activity. I have a partial list here of Arizona statutes that were violated and supported by the facts exposed. There has also been a petition submitted to expand the audit to Pima County. I believe this will extend even further to all Arizona counties eventually. This is the climate in which I now view elections and election processes in Arizona. I do not feel comfortable with what I am seeing in our state, and it brings all processes into doubt. Yesterday, I attended the LNA testing of the newly purchased ENS/ESNS Express Vote Machines. The Elections Office did a great job conducting the tests. The machines passed, they can count. These replaced those handicapped suitcase machines previously used. Newer technology does not mean updated nor improved data security. While the new machines seem to count just fine, just focusing on counting as the audit-- the Arizona audit revealed, there is much more to the story. The biggest concern I had when observing the testing of the new voting machines was an introduction of a paper ballot, which is inserted into the machine and then prints out a receipt that shows me my vote, has some precinct text there, and also a barcode on it. I cannot tell if the text is what gets counted or if my choices are buried somewhere in the technology of that barcode. There is no visibility to what actually gets counted, if this is the case. There is no way I can see what that barcode or anything about the technology needed to read the barcode. Reviews have been going on all year, all over the country, for the various manufacturers and vendors for voting machines, and there have even been hackers' conventions held to expose the ease with which ESNS systems can be compromised. Just that barcode alone is cause for concern because it completely removes the auditability of a paper ballot that has human-marked ovals on it. It completely removes this capability. It seems Pinal County is looking to gradually move away from election integrity instead of towards it, beginning with these machines that allow the handicap to vote and anyone else who might want to use them.
Mary, can we wrap it up?
Yep, this is the last. This is the last. Paper ballots with human marks on them are the way forward for this county, and that needs to be considered by this board. I thank you for this time.
Mary, could you state your name? We didn't get your full name and at least a general location of where you live.
Mary Rodriguez, and I'm from Casa Grande.
Thank you. Okay, on my left side, anybody else from this-- ma'am in the white-- in the white shirt? And then I'll come to you. So please state your name and at least a general location of where you live. And you have three minutes. The yellow light means you have a minute.
Pam Burks from Gold Canyon. A Mountain Brook resident, a community service volunteer, serving in many capacities. Gold Canyon Business Association, Gold Canyon Lions, organizer of the Gold Canyon Business Fair. I am also on the editorial staff of The Mountaineer, a freelance writer for local publications, a member of Adobe, and vice president of the Gold Canyon Homeowners Alliance. I'm here to date a request that our Pinal County supervisors and all decision-makers concerning the proposed study with ASU take a pause from this project until the residents, Gold Canyon Business Association, Adobe, and Gold Canyon Homeowners Alliance have more time to analyze and make recommendations regarding the survey questions, objectives, and outcomes. I have watched the Economic Development Forum video. There were no representatives from Gold Canyon Business Association, Adobe Alliance, or any of the church leaders. They were not present, we were not invited. I keep hearing the resistance doesn't say what they want to do, only what they don't want, but we have not been asked. We told-- we are told, "Just take the survey like good little lackeys." The survey conducted by GCCI has no clear objectives or anticipated outcomes directly affecting Gold Canyon, because it's a Gold Canyon survey. It is too generic and undefined. The questions were based on a survey from Battle Creek, Michigan, the third-largest city in Michigan, and from Apache Junction. We are a small desert rural community, and the questions were formulated from a big back east city. I found a survey from Wickenburg, Arizona, and they share similar demographics, population, land size, and they are a retirement community like Gold Canyon. And they stated clear objectives. They wanted to know how to revitalize their business district. I can give you some examples of what Gold Canyon might want. How about we direct traffic from the US-60 to the business districts? Should we have a theme? Western, the mystical, the artistic, sports? We could create a center of town for holiday gatherings, like the lighting of our Christmas tree, with room for outdoor boutiques, a community center for groups and organizations to meet. But no one has asked the residents what they want. That's not on the survey. And certainly, we don't want or need what big cities want. We all moved here for the natural beauty of the Superstition Mountains. We knew our amenities were 15-minute drive away. We have sufficient medical, dining, groceries, gas, and the Walgreens like a little mini-market, over-the-counter medications, prescriptions, foods, gifts, beauty aids, and more. Please, pause until we can bring in the residents and local organizations. Stop dividing us and calling us the resistance. Let's all work together for a better product with more transparency, clear objectives. That's how you get community buy-in, and that's what makes Gold Canyon a better community for all. Thank you.
Thank you. Ma'am, yeah?
Good morning. My name is Phyllis Pettyjohn. I live in Oracle, Arizona. And I'm simply here to personally thank the Board of Supervisors for disapproving the equity coordinator that was submitted, the federal guidelines for our county. Thank you very much for disapproving that measure.
Thank you. Anybody else on this side of the-- sir, in the back?
Good morning. My name is Eric Morrell. I am a 22-year resident of Santan Valley. I also represent Shadow Ridge Custom Homes. So, we have been going round and round with the county assessor. We've had some issues with minor land divisions being processed, parcel numbers being assigned. And when we talk to people, supervisors, we've been told that it is an assessor problem and an office problem. So, we set up a meeting with the assessor, and it turns out that they have a huge staffing issue, which is in direct control of the supervisors. Their starting wage at the assessor's office is $17 an hour, which I can go get a job at Taco Bell tomorrow at $17 an hour. I think we need-- the staff is working super hard. They are mandatory overtime, including Sundays, which that in itself can burn out the entire office. So, I'm requesting that we put this item on the agenda for the next meeting so we can address issues, whether that be pay increases, staffing issues. But all of that is in direct control of the Board of Supervisors. And so, I'm asking for this item to be put on the agenda. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Ma'am?
Good morning. Honorable Chairman, honorable members of the board. My name is Bunny Butler. I am a homeowner in Gold Canyon, having lived here for a little over 13 years. I'm a volunteer in the community and membership chair of Adobe. As such, I often have opportunity to hear concerns of fellow residents and neighbors. Many of their concerns lately, I have no answer for. This morning, I thought it might be valuable to you and helpful to your constituents at large if I share some of the things that I've been hearing. These comments and questions have surfaced as the result of the recent buzz around town regarding the proposed survey that you have before you. For the sake of this forum and brevity, I will pose the comments as rhetorical questions. I've been asked the following. Why is it always Gold Canyon chosen for projects and programs which pose a radical change in the land use, as well as threaten our privacy and peaceful way of life? Why do we so often hear about controversial proposals before the Board of Supervisors when there's little or no time for the citizens to research and formulate an appropriate response to the issue pending? What is the supervisor's vision for Gold Canyon? It seems to have changed in recent years from one of safeguarding our natural resources and protecting the environment. However, it has become unclear to many what the vision is. With regard to the survey, how will it benefit Gold Canyon? And if we do need yet another comprehensive plan, why relegate that, the task, to an outside influence? Surely, you gentlemen know the area better than those outside our area. Why is a survey with so many intrusive questions being considered without the majority of service organizations of Gold Canyon participating in its creation? What could be the purpose of asking, "What effect did racial and ethical, ethnical balance of this area have on your decision to buy here in Gold Canyon?" That is an inappropriate, offensive question, and it is, in my mind, racially blatant and divisive. Finally, have you considered, gentlemen, how close this survey in its draft form mirrors the globalist document Transforming Our World 2030 Agenda, which is promulgated by the New World Order faction of the United Nations? I thank you for your time and your kind attention to my concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir?
Excuse me. Natasha tells me that I'm to make the announcement that my-- my comments be part of the record.
Okay.
Honorable Chair, honorable Board members and staff, good morning. My name is Glenn Walp. I reside in Gold Canyon, have been there since 2005, and I'm currently the president of the Adobe organization in Gold Canyon. There's a chaotic situation occurring in America right now that we're all familiar with that, in my opinion, is going to create some serious issues regarding America. And that is the divisive situation regarding taking the needle or not, accepting the vaccine or not, that it's my body and I will put into it what I want, as opposed to those on the other side. I personally respect everybody and their opinions, whatever their decision may be. That's their call. But I, myself, am on the side of no needle. I will take my chances with COVID. And COVID may win. But at least I will stand under the banner that is given to me by the United States of America and its Constitution and my independence. That said, a parallel situation is occurring in Gold Canyon, Arizona. Yesterday, there was a-- a meeting, I will call it demonstration, in New York City by people who are being fired by the hundreds and the thousands because they will not take the injection. And the comments of one of the commentators was to the effect, "This is all about power. This is all about power from above to tell us what's good for us. We will tell you what's good for you. We'll let you know what's good for you. You either take the needle or you don't." And that power is coming from a different authority. We were given a survey, and my contention as the president of Adobe and the Adobe Board, which is consists of a multiplicity of different opinions, all voted against it. For this very reason, the people of Gold Canyon were never involved in the beginning processes. Never. It was something created by someone else who said, "This is the way we should go. This is what we should do, and you will follow us. And if you don't like it, too bad, because this is the way we're going." There should have been meetings, multiple, multiple, multiple meetings with the people of Gold Canyon, both snowbirds and not. Let them have input, give them ownership in. What are we doing? What's this all about? Who's taking the survey? What's the purpose of the survey? What are we doing? And let them decide. Let them decide on questions that should be asked. What's important to us in Gold Canyon? For some reason, as Bunny stated, Gold Canyon seems to be a big focus here. Okay, involve us. You need to start this whole process over. Start from the beginning where it should have begun, not halfway through and say, "Here's the survey." For what? What's the purpose? What's the ultimate goal? Tell us. Involve us. That was never, never, never done. As the president of Gold Canyon, I will always be on the side of the people. The people rule, not the authorities. The people rule. And those people that I see-- I apologize. I thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody on what is my left or your right side of the room? Okay, let's start on this side. Barry? I know you came up and told me you had something, so-- then, ma'am in the blue shirt? So, I'll get her in a minute.
Okay. Good morning, supervisors. My name is Barry McCain, Arizona City, with-- I'm a registered lobbyist for Arizona Veterans with Disabilities. We must never fake it until we make it. We must, although, feel more comfortable in this time of COVID. The key is seeing things in terms of their priority of importance. Those priority importance is health, shelter, economic well-being, and leaving a positive legacy for future generations. I'd like to set a baseline. As those know, I did a career in the United States Navy. One of my specialties was aviation navigation, 4129. I've been trained in anything that has to do with aircraft. I've done aircraft investigations with Blue Angels, Top Gun, and I'm talking about item number four. I oppose to it. The reason why I'm opposed to it is not only knowing the aircraft side, but the main issue here is that, in my humble opinion, and I refer you to the Attorney General on this, that the First, Fourth, Fifth, and Fourteenth Amendments are violated. Therefore, it's with prudent judgment that we precludes us from using this technology in the fashion that they're asking. Thank you.
Thank you. Ma'am, in the blue shirt?
Good morning, supervisors.
Give us your name, your name--
Oh, I'm sorry, Mary Emfries.
And a general location of where you live?
Gold Canyon, Arizona.
Very good, thank you.
I've been there for 20 years.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. I'm here to address the-- regarding the Gold Canyon Community Plan that they're going to do along with ASU. My concern is that the supervisors have resolved that the Gold Canyon Community Incorporated are the organization to work with, although there are only 12 residents-- I believe there are residents, I'm not real sure of that-- with only a few hundred members. And it seems Gold Canyon residents' ideas may not be considered as powerful or as reputable as GCCI. Also, I'm here to discuss the 922 Economic Development Forum, which included Apache Junction Chamber and employees. As far as I know, there were many Apache Junction, no Gold Canyon, except for the GCCI. The Gold Canyon Chamber of Commerce wasn't included. The Gold Canyon Home Alliance Incorporated wasn't included. Adobe of Gold Canyon wasn't included. And as far as I know, no residents of Gold Canyon were included, except for GCCI. Now, there were over 17,000 petitions against this proposed development that are being completely ignored. Instead, the forum seems to consist of pro-development and not a fair assessment of Gold Canyon. To get a full picture of residents against developing this approximately 12,000 acres, I would ask that Gold Canyon Home Alliance and Gold Canyon Adobe be included in this forum as they have a more complete view of residents' concerns. And I'd like to again repeat the almost, the 1,700 petitions that were against this. Please do not be ignored. Let's see what else I wanted to say. All right. In closing, I would ask that the supervisors please understand that we elected you and entrusted you to make the right choices for all of us and not just a particular group. And that's basically it. I hope you have a good day.
Thank you. Sir? And then--
Good morning. My name is Noel Rec. I live in Casa Grande. I'm here to speak to two topics. First, the decision to turn down the COVID money. As a retired teacher and coach, one thing I learned working in the public sector is you never turn down money unless there are really good reasons to do so. I read Mr. Kavanaugh's op-ed in The Dispatch, and I couldn't disagree more with his reasoning. It seemed to be reasoning based more on ideology rather than concern for public health. So, I would suggest, if it's not too late, I urge the board to reconsider its decision. In regard to the fraud it, I'll keep it simple. I urge the board not to engage in any actions that would lend legitimacy to the thoroughly debunked Cyber Ninjas farce. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Sir? Mr. Kavanaugh? Supervisor, did you want to respond? Your name was mentioned in that. Okay.
Good afternoon, or good morning. My name is Brett Marchant. I'm representing probably about 20 or 30 of the smaller builders in the area, in the Santan Valley area. I'm from-- a resident of Santan Valley for the past 40 years. One of the prob-- the big problem that we're having, as Eric Morrell mentioned earlier, is we're having a huge issue getting our tax parcel numbers. I'm sure you're aware of that. The timeframes-- like I said, I've been out here about 40 years. Been doing developing, small developments for most of those years. I've seen the waves, I've seen everything come and go, and we've seen the big ones. When things were booming in '05, '06, '07, we were getting our tax parcel numbers out in 30 days, 60 days tops. It's taken us six months, eight months, nine months now. So, we set a meeting up with assessors a couple of weeks ago and met with them, and listened to what their issues were. And it seemed it was all boiling down to money. One of the questions I have-- One of the questions I have, well, that's not really a question, I'm just, the lack of income to the county that we're missing out on with the impact fees, the taxes, the building permits, it just seems to me there's got to be a solution to this that, and I don't know where to go with it, but, and how to solve it. We're just hearing the grievance from the assessor's side. But the biggest problem, thing that I think a lot of these builders, we're in the middle of a boom right now, and we don't want to miss out on it, waiting on tax parcels that we're looking at a year down the road. So I don't know what the solution is to it, but I guess we're just asking to get on the agenda. I'm not quite sure how to do it, but get on the agenda or something like that and see if there's a, something that can be resolved with the, they're telling us to come to supervisors and that's what we're doing. So we've got quite a few builders out there that their hands are tied, they've got millions of dollars sitting out and money that they're holding on to, real estate that they can't do anything with. So I don't know how we go about doing that.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else from this side of the room? Pardon me? Why don't you wait till we get to the county manager's report? Go ahead, yeah. Good morning, Dave.
Hi, my name is Dave Coward. I'm also from Gold Canyon, also on the Board of Directors for GCCI. I don't want to put on public display any criticisms around here in our community or expose any fractures in our community, but I do want to set the record straight that we have been meeting for over two years. We have monthly meetings, the first Saturday of every month, that are open to every resident of Gold Canyon. We do it because of COVID on Zoom right now, so winter visitors or whatever can view it. We publicize these meetings in the Nextdoor, in the HOA Facebook, so it's widely distributed. So there's no reason for people not to know what we've been doing over the past two years. Also, to set the record straight, that when we first started from the very beginning, we approached Adobe to join us and consider participating in what we were trying to do because we're not trying to force anything on the community. We are just trying to gather information and be a conduit to improve the community. And we have worked on this for a long time. The survey has been months in the making. We've looked for feedback from as many organizations as we could to reach out to in the organization. Adobe, even though they don't like the survey, they created, gave some comments which were good comments and we have included and changed in our draft. So we've tried to be transparent and inclusive throughout the whole process. So I just want to let that, let you know that. Thank you.
Thank you. Got my bearings now. Anybody else from the north side of the room? Kelsey, do we have somebody, we have people in the overflow room? State your name, general location, where you live and--
I'm Carol Lee Bailey. I came from Oracle Saddle Brook Ranch, actually. I came up with a carful of ladies from the group that I am president of, the Saddle Brook Ranch Women of Action. I'm also the chair of CD1 in Panal. Now, we are late, we just got here like four minutes ago because of the paving on, or on 79 or 77. So I have, I'm a bit confused. Did the equity coordinator position get brought up again, or did it get brought up and was it passed? Is it a done deal or is that still a question with the Board of Supervisors?
There is not an item on today's agenda under that heading at all.
But can I talk about it now?
You can.
Okay. It was my understanding that the board rejected that language in the HUD PAC about the equity coordinator. I then have come to find out that it's rearing its head again possibly because someone really wants it passed. And I want to reiterate what I said in the first time is, it's such a bureaucratic waste of money to take millions of dollars to hire a person to go out and ferret out those few individuals out there who don't want to take the vaccine, or who have had trouble taking the vaccine, rather, that they can't get to a place where they can take the vaccine. It's, this is for minorities and people that we think are too downtrodden to get theirself to a CVS or a Walgreens to get their shot. Everybody who wants the shot has taken the shot. There aren't people out there and it doesn't deserve millions of dollars devoted to that cause. It's also in my mind and many of the ladies I talked to, a big, huge swelling of the government, which is another thing that we have got to stop because once the government grows, it never shrinks back. And I for one do not want another position added and then that position will have to hire more people and then they will have to hire more people and they never will quit. They'll just be on the payroll again. So don't bring it back, don't dress it up, put lipstick on it, it's still a pig. So don't vote for that, please. We are watching to see what you do, we're interested in it. And I'm asking you to do, to think about what I said and not do that. The other thing I wanted to talk about is I understand that there is an effort underway to establish an ethics committee for the Board of Supervisors. And quite frankly, I'm surprised you don't have one already, especially in this day and age. It's a necessary--
Your time is up.
Oh, it's a necessary vehicle. Thank you.
Is anybody else from back there?
My name is Deborah Tracy and I'm from Saddle Brook Ranch. And regarding the vaccination equity funding for the position of vaccine equity coordinator, as I understand it, proponents of the position for a vaccine equity coordinator suggested the duties of the coordinator would entail the transfer, distribution, and administering of the vaccine dosages. However, the language in the agreement specifically prohibits these actions by the vaccine equity coordinator. I therefore request that Supervisor Kavanaugh and the other members of the Board of Supervisors vote no to the County Health Department request to add a $3.4 million grant for COVID-19 vaccination equity funding. Thank you for your consideration in this matter. And I had one more thing to speak on, the formation of the Panal County Ethics Committee. I strongly support Supervisor Kavanaugh's efforts to establish an ethics program within the Department of the Panal County Board of Supervisors and to extend the ethics program to include all county boards of supervisors within the state of Arizona. Thank you.
Good morning. It's nice to see you, smiling faces. My name is Marilyn Airday. I am a new resident of Arizona, not quite a year now, and proud to be here. I am a refugee from California and it's my pleasure to be here. I have two issues that I'd like to discuss with you. First of all, it is involving the equity organizer. I'm very concerned about this because from what I've been able to research, and that is my, was my livelihood, was research, I'm not able to find where there's been due diligence on this. Where was, where is it that's, what, what, why is it coming to pass? Why would you even bring it up unless it's just the money? Because I don't know as there's been due diligence as far as the need for it. In fact, if there is a need for it, I'll volunteer and I won't take any pay. So it makes no sense to me that we need to bring about more bureaucracy, especially if there's not been due diligence. And that's a question that I have and I would very much appreciate a response to that question. Secondly, the ethics committee, and I think that's a fantastic idea in a time and a place where we need ethics. I think that's a fantastic idea and I support it and I thank you so very much for listening to me. You guys have a great day.
Thank you. Okay. Anyone else? All right. We'll move on to item number two on the agenda, which is the county manager's report. Mr. Lou, this is information only.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I just have a few items to update you and the public on today. A few of us were privileged and able to go to Lucid Motors' production event and tour their plant yesterday and just wanted to let you know it is a great example of human ingenuity mixed with high technology robotics that creates quality and excellence in a facility. There's a million square feet there now and they're going to be expanding to 2.7 million square feet here in the near future. They employ 1,100 employees there now and that'll go over into phase two to 2,000 plus. So very impressed with what they have going on their, their plant in Casa Grande. And then secondly, just to save the date, notification that on November 5th, the morning of, pretty much 8:00 AM to lunch, Central Arizona College in partnership with Panal County Workforce and other stakeholders would be holding a education and workforce development summit. And so if you could just put that placeholder on your calendars if you're interested. And then in regards to, there was some conversation this morning on it and I wanted to update you anyways, but in the next meeting on October 6th, the assessor's office will be bringing a request for additional positions related to cartography. And there is a live now on our website, an ability for those who need it to get what we're characterizing as pending APN numbers, that is live and the ability is to have an APN, assessor's parcel number assigned and available on the website for those that need it. While it's been quality control checked for matching legal description to the APN itself, it's pending because there will still be work to done, which takes time for the actual taxing jurisdictions and assessments and everything else. But that way the APN will be able to get out to the industry faster so that they can use it for their purposes prior to the finalization of the tax bills. And then finally, I will be out next week at the International City County Managers' Association Conference to be on a panel, but Deputy County Manager Mary Ellen Shepherd will be acting next week. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, any questions for Mr. Lou?
I do. You know, in conjunction with the presentation or the request of our, on our next board meeting by the county assessor's office, I'd like to more clarification as whether that's going to do the job to get him caught up. That's something that we've had discussions on. So if he could come prepared to talk about how those additional employees that he's seeking, how that's all going to help improve the holdup that we're having right now. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? All right, thank you. Mr. Chairman. Yeah, supervisor Kavanaugh.
Just quickly, so thank you to our county management staff and the department for getting the APN numbers out. It's a discussion we've had and they immediately addressed the problem. And I think that's a testament to good government and good practices that they could solve this problem, at least temporarily in this way. So kudos to them.
Thank you for those comments. All right. Okay, brings us to item number three, a presentation of certificates of service to employees 20, 25, 30, and 35 years.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
The need smiling back there. Leo.
We do have eight employees to celebrate today. And I'll first just make the announcement for those that weren't able to be present with us and then we can go through those that are. So first we have Jessica Tapia, who's been with the county for 20 years and is currently an administrative assistant for Panal County Sheriff's Office. We have next Matthew Kip, who has been with the county for 30 years and is currently an emergency dispatcher senior at Panal County Sheriff's Office. And then also we have Darren, I hope I pronounce his name right, but Gothier, who has been with the county for 20 years and is currently a building inspection supervisor. And then we have Linda Sloan Compton, who's been with the county for 25 years and is currently a enterprise resources planning analyst. And then to those who are present here with us today, who you mentioned just a second ago, who is smiling, has been here for 35 years, Denise Smith. And as she walks up, I'll go ahead and give her a little bit of history here. She started in 1986 as a juvenile probation officer. In 1993, was promoted to a probation officer three. And then in 1995, to, promoted to a probation officer four. And then two years later in 97, probation officer five. So you can see that pattern of progression every couple of years. And then in 2012, was promoted to deputy director of juvenile court services. And in 2015, was promoted to her current role as director of juvenile court services. And I will not spoil a surprise, but I am aware that she has received a very distinguished award that will be, will be released soon. Thanks Denise, did you want to say a few words?
Here's, here's where you get to do your 20-minute speech.
Thank you so much, Chairman Miller, members of the board. It's been an honor and a privilege to serve as an employee for Panal County for 35 years. I was given the option to say a few words today and like I said, I can't have worked here 35 years and say nothing. So they did ask that I share a memory and I don't, I was trying to gather how many memories I have in 35 years. It's a lot, we'll be here all day. So what I decided to do was, the first thing that popped up in my mind was when I stepped foot in this very building 35 years ago. I was hired as a probation officer, I worked on the second floor. And I recall the director at the time is Jerry Stogner, you know, bless his soul, he's now passed. And Jerry took me to my office and gave me, there was one employee who trained me for one day. So I sat in my chair the next day and I was waiting for help and I wasn't getting it. So I figured I have to figure this out on my own. So as I was sitting in my chair, I had the office that's on the far west side upstairs, on the north side of the building. And I was wondering, did I do the right thing? I wasn't real sure. So I worked for a year and a half as a diversion officer and then I went out in the field. And at that point in time, about probably six months later, I was hooked. I was hooked because I really enjoyed what I was doing with the kids, the families, the schools, and the community. It was a job that I knew I was going to love. So now I'm a juvenile court director and unfortunately, I don't have the opportunity to provide the direct services, but I do have the opportunity to provide the leadership for the organization and for the staff to continue to do well with the youth and the families in the communities. I do want to thank the Board of Supervisors for the support that juvenile court services has had throughout the year. I want to especially thank Chairman Miller and Vice Chair Goodman for being part of our Juvenile Justice System Improvement Executive Strategic Planning Committee, that's a mouthful. You have been instrumental and have helped us and guided us to make better decisions about how we serve our youth and our community here in Panal County. I also want to thank the judicial leadership. I want to thank my staff. My staff make me who I am today. They are wonderful, they're caring, they're genuine, and they continue to plug away COVID or no COVID. We're doing an excellent job out there. But I also want to thank my mom. I invited my mom to come today. She's back there in the corner, I didn't tell her I was going to do this. But my mom was the one who convinced me to take this job. When I graduated from Arizona State University in 1986, my plan was to go to the United States Air Force. And she convinced me to stay in Panal County and to stay where my-- roots are here, in Pinal County, and I am glad I did. So again, thank you very much for your support.
Thank you, Denise. Give you one word for Denise. It's passion. She has a passion for her job, and it shows. So, thank you.
Thank you, Denise. Yes, stick around and we'll do the photo.
Stick around, because we've got more coming. So, go ahead, Leo.
Next, we have Letitia Martinez, who has been with the county for 20 years, started in 2001 as a detention officer, and then in 2004, was promoted to her current role as Deputy Sheriff. Hi, Letitia. Were you wanting to say any words here?
Okay. We're going to get you up here for a photo op in a few minutes, so.
And the next, we have, who has been with us for 20 years, Douglas Peeble, and was hired on in 2001 as a deputy and was promoted to his current position in 2011 as Sergeant. Sergeant Peeble, did you want to say any words?
No, I don't think very much. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And then, last but not least, we have Andrea Aelman, who has been here for 20 years and was hired in 2001 as an Administrative Clerk II, and then has developed through the years in 2003, promoting to an Accounting Clerk II, and two years later, in 2005, to an Accountant I. Three years later, promoted to a Payroll Accountant, and then, in this year, in May, promoted to her current role as Accounting Supervisor. So congratulations, and thank you, Andrea. Did you want to say a few words? No? Well, thank you. That's who we have for today. If you want to come up, we can give you your...
We have some certificates and something to present you.
Yep.
If you'll all please come forth, because we do have to get a photo of this. It's mandatory.
Family is invited as well for the photo if they want.
Yeah. Thank you, and thank you to all the dedicated employees we have at Pinal County. Really do appreciate their time and service to this county. So, that brings us to item number four, Discussion Approval or Disapproval of the Cooperative Purchase Request, which is, I believe, on the Pictometry. Is Randy, no?
I'm Randy. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, fellow board members. I'm Randy Stinson, Accounting and Reporting Manager for the Finance Department, and I'm just going to introduce, this is a continuation from the September 1st meeting. This is for the Discussion Approval/Disapproval of Requisition 162641 and the amount of $531,764. The supplier is Pictometry International Corporation for Imagery Software. On behalf of the Assessors' Office, which amends the existing agreement dated September 27th, 2017, and I believe we have a representative from the Assessors' Office to give a presentation to supply you all with a little bit more information on the services.
Okay. Assessor Wolf? There you are.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm going to be brief. This was an item that we considered in June, put in the budget, was approved to be requisitioned at the time, and this is an item that we've had since 2017. It was a good idea at the time, when the board passed it unanimously then. It's still a good idea to do this again in 2021, as it's a county resource, not just the Assessors' Office resource. In the time of an avalanche of business in the land department, we don't want to take away tools. We'd like to keep tools to help us do our job effectively and efficiently, and that's really all I have to say about it.
Okay. I believe we have Paula Mullenek. Did you want to say anything about this? Does your department use this? I see you in the back, back there. Your name is listed as one of the presenters. And then Christopher Watermaker, I believe, and I've seen him.
Morning, Chairman, members of the board. My name is Paula Mullenek. I'm the Code Compliance Manager, Pinal County, in Community Development. As in my little memo states, we use this a lot for our zoning code compliance cases. It's a more up-to-date view of the parcels that are out there. You can get the side-by-side with different past views. Also, one of the other issues that this does allow us to search by parcel number, as opposed to Google Earth, you have to have an address to be able to search in Google Earth. And the problem we have is either newer, as you have heard, we've got a lot of new lots coming in and new addressing. A lot of the new addresses do not show up in Google Earth, and also, a lot of the older addresses don't show up. So when I come across that, and the code compliance officers, we have to go back to either GIS or something like that to try and get a location of something that's close, then go back to Google Earth if we can and find it. So we do use this a lot. We use it for the history of structures on the property to show when a structure was put in, when it was built, and the accurate measurements. This is a really good tool for us to get accurate measurements, to do setbacks in the height of a house. And in addition, the code compliance officers, when they go out there and we take a case to Superior Court and get an abatement judgment, this has been a really valuable resource for us to get an accurate idea of what it's going to cost for the abatement estimate, because we can see it. A lot of times, we go out to the property, and the property owner doesn't want us to be on there. We don't trespass, and then we can get a more accurate idea of the really troublesome properties that we have taken through our violation process. So bottom line, we do use this a lot. I hope it gets accepted, because we use it as one of our tools in our toolbox. In addition, we still do Google Earth also to get some of the, I guess, earlier, later photos that are there. But the problem we've run into also with Google Earth is they're blurry, so at times, we can't even tell if there's a structure on the property, because they're not clear photographs. So just wanted to bring that out, that it is a tool and a resource that code compliance does use. Thank you.
Okay. Well, any questions for Paula?
I do.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Kavanaugh.
Thank you for your presentation. So if you have a case and the Pictometry airplane flew over six months ago, wouldn't you still need to have an up-to-date picture? Because might something have changed from the time of their photograph to the time of the complaint?
We do, but what we use the Pictometry for is the history, a resource with that. So we see, and a lot of times, when we go out to the property, we cannot trespass on the property. So if a neighbor is complaining about this and saying they put their shed right on the property line, well, a lot of times, we can't get back there to see it, and the neighbor doesn't want there to be a problem between neighbors where it can get volatile if they find out they're the ones that complained. We can look at the Pictometry and see the areas that we can't see from the ride of ways.
And does your department employ drones to just fly a drone up?
No, we do not. And we've had that with legal, and at this time, we have chosen not to do that.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Nope. Thank you.
Mr. Watermaker.
Good morning, Chairman, members of the board. Chris Watermaker, County Engineer, representing Public Works and Flood Control Districts. So I did provide this memo, which outlines the fact that we do use the Pictometry technology. It's a really cool tool. It's nice to have. However, it's, we feel that it's not necessarily essential to our daily operations. We do have data available through Google Earth, through our GIS system, and the primary product offered by Pictometry is those oblique or angled photos, which is not something we particularly use. It's mostly the aerial photos. It's nice to have the newer, high-resolution data, but the oblique information is not particularly useful for what we do.
Okay.
Okay? Any questions?
Any other questions? Any questions for...
Could you be, Mr. Chairman, may I?
Supervisor Kavanaugh.
Could you be more specific? You said you use the overhead views. What did you do before Pictometry?
So, before Pictometry, we would, again, use Google Earth or our GIS system. There's, sometimes there's resources online through other federal agencies that may have different aerial photographs. In fact, in some part of our county, we can go to Maricopa County's website and get information as well. So we've got a variety of tools, but if it's just not available, then it's not available. We do have a drone in Public Works that we can use to get most recent, most accurate, up-to-date information if we need it, which we do employ for projects and things.
Thank you.
Okay.
Chris, just real quick on, because you've, your department in the past has been able to research and find old aerial photos from way back to determine what was one time a path of flood, and then you can see where it changes. I mean, and is that what you're talking about, going to Maricopa County to get?
Yes.
I mean, it's got to be like a state database, almost.
Yes, so Maricopa County has the data, also ASU Image Archive has data we can use, and honestly, Google Earth has a lot of historical imagery as well. Not always the best quality, but for what we use, looking at washes and floodplains and things like that, usually it's good enough.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Okay, this is actually an action item, so a decision either to approve or disapprove this cooperative purchasing request.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we postpone indefinitely the Pictometry item number four.
Okay, I have a motion to...
Postpone.
If we can...
Go ahead.
Chairman, Supervisor Kavanaugh, in that motion, if we can just table indefinitely.
Okay. So we'll change the motion to table indefinitely the item, as I don't think it's been properly, no demonstration that we actually need the item has been demonstrated. So I would move to table the item indefinitely.
Okay, we have a motion to table it. Is there a second?
Mr. Chairman, I was going to ask if, for Mr. Kavanaugh to explain what you started to, do you not think that this would help with getting the Assessors' Office more speed to do what they need to do?
So it's my understanding, and Mr. Wolf, if you'd like to answer, Mr. Chairman, would it be appropriate to bring Mr. Wolf to the...
Sure, I'll add. Sure, Mr. Wolf.
So, Mr. Wolf, in this discussion, it's my understanding that the Assessors' Office would still have to go out and measure the houses, and that's the information we received, I think, yesterday or the day before. Is that correct?
Well, there's, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Kavanaugh, Supervisor Kavanaugh, there's a mixed answer to that, because it depends on the situation and what we're trying to do. So yes, at some points, we're compelled to go out, and sometimes we can use Pictometry to do it. It just depends on the particular building. But the point is, as Supervisor Surti brought up, you're taking away a tool that helps us get our work done if you don't do this. That's why we got it in 2017. We already have a room full of developers who were here early this morning, saying we're way behind on APNs. Why would you take a resource away that'll help us get these developers moving down the pipeline to get their business done? I think it's a foolhardy mistake, and it's, it's, it's just a, all I can do, I'm an elected official, all I can do is come to this board and recommend, because you guys decide how to spend the money. We spent it in 2017. It's been a great resource for the county. I think it'll be a great resource again, and really, that's the only thing I can say about it.
But, Mr. Wolf, did you tell my staff that you couldn't quantify how it would help?
No. Mr. Chairman, Mr. Kavanaugh, Supervisor Kavanaugh, we said we couldn't put a hard-dollar number on the return on investment. I don't look at this as a hard-dollar return on investment issue, from the way I sit. From the Assessors' Office, what we need is the tool in order to do our job. Whether that returns us $500,000 or $200,000, I can't tell you. But all I know is I have a lot of, I have an avalanche of businesses coming in our office, and it's not getting any less. It's growing. We're, you know, you saw the developer, the deal-making meeting with Rose Law Group, and there's just tons of money coming to this county. All this would do is put us further behind the eight ball. But again, you're the board, you decide how to spend the money. I'm recommending to you, it's a good idea for all of us sitting here and for the citizens of Pinal County.
Mr. Chair, are you...
Any more questions?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, Mr. Wolf, so you said in the circumstances where you can and cannot use it to measure, I believe you stated in the past that, you know, D.R. Horton Development or Horton Development, or Richmond America, you can do that from the air, because it's a cookie-cutter house, and it's the same. In the case where you couldn't use that, that would be some custom home or some odd building that you really have to go touch. Is that correct?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Supervisor McClure, that's correct. The industry has moved towards allowing aerial photography for new buildings of like-for-like in a suburban development, where you have standard four plans, to go ahead and put it on the tax roll without having to visit it. Now, it hasn't been adjudicated, and the statute hasn't been changed, but everyone's been accepting that as evaluation procedure across country as being legitimate. In the case of a custom building and so forth, yes, that's why we have appraisers on staff that go out and visit and make sure that we have the right data in order to come up with a value.
Thank you.
And, Mr. Wolf, if I remember right, we did not, we did not do the entire county, so we still have areas that you'd still have to go out physically and do, because we haven't photographed the entire county yet.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Miller, what we've done is, when we did the first flyover, we didn't do the East County, the copper corridor, and when we looked at it again here four years later, the thinking was, especially with the 9/11 folks, for emergency vehicles, since the fires in Dudleyville and all the other fires, that we should include that as part of our flyover this time around. So, to answer your question succinctly, yes, we did quite a bit less, while we did two-thirds of the county, where the high-growth areas were in 2017, and this time around, we're including the copper corridor. But there's still a lot of land in Pinal County that we won't fly with this particular contract.
Right. And I knew it wasn't a complete county photography.
That is correct.
Okay. Supervisor Kavanaugh.
Mr. Wolf, so the areas that you have used Pictometry, are you behind in your work in those areas currently?
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Kavanaugh, yes, we are behind, because we use an additional tool to what we do for assigning parcel numbers and cartography and appraisal. Yes, we're behind. We, frankly, we're, like I said, we're in an avalanche, and we need this tool at least to keep up, or help us keep up with what we're doing. The citizens of the county deserve this, from the standpoint of the services we provide, especially people who are developing new houses for our citizens.
And, Mr. Wolf, how does it help the minor land division? Can you explain that?
If there, Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Kavanaugh, if there are anomalies in the application process, in the dealing process, easements, floodplains, what, there's a whole variety of things that could come along, where people can get an aerial view plus the side views of whatever is in that area, it helps them move the process along, saving people having to drive out to the property and examine it, you know, in person, physically.
Thank you. And you mentioned that the citizens deserve this, deserve good service, but they also deserve a thorough examination from the Board of Supervisors. We're charged with spending money appropriately, so... We're charged with spending money appropriately, so I think it's important that we properly predicate this and justify it for the taxpayers. And so what I've heard is while it does help, we, I have not given, been given a thorough explanation of how this is going to help you in such a way, with such speed, to justify the approximately half million, $531,000. So that's the answers we've been looking for, for the last couple of weeks.
Well, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Kavanaugh, I'm the assessor. My, I run the assessor's office, that's my specialty. It's my judgment, and I've elected three times this office, that what we did in 2017 is something we should do again for the good of the county and the citizens here. You may differ, that's fine, but I can only bring this forward as a tool that we need to do our development in this county. If the board decides to reject the idea, that's okay. It won't change anything as far as me personally, but I think it'll denigrate the services we give to the citizens and to the people trying to develop land in this county.
Okay. Thank you, Assessor Wolf. Okay, we have a motion. Does anybody want a second? And I think the motion was to table indefinitely this item. Okay, hearing no second, is there another motion?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve item number four as presented. I'd second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, say nay.
Mr. Chairman, I'll abstain on this vote.
I don't think you can.
Don't you?
No?
Then mine will be a no, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Four, one. Thank you. Okay, Purchasing Division report for September 29th. Randy, she comes again.
Good morning again. Randy Stinson, Accounting and Reporting Manager for Finance. I'm here to deliver your purchasing division report for September 29th, 2001. First up today, we have contract awards. The board has requested to approve the following new contract awards. Number one, IFB 221126. We recommend Waste Management of Arizona be awarded a contract for landfill disposal services beginning September 29th, 2021, through September 28th, 2022, with four optional one-year extensions. This contract will be used countywide. Item number two, IFB 222023. Next, we recommend Danse and Construction LLC be awarded a contract for Pinellas County Sheriff's Evidence Storage and Warehouse Renovations Project for the base bid amount, alternate one and alternate two, and a total amount of $2,256,900. This contract will be used by facilities. Next, we have contract amendments. The board has requested to approve the following contract amendments. Number one, RFP 180523. We recommend approval of Amendment Three to exercise the optional extension period for debt collection services with Valley Collection Service LLC. This contract is used by the hearing office. Number two, RFP 202025. Next, we recommend approval of Amendment One to exercise the optional extension period for workforce development data analysts with a partnership for workforce innovation. This contract is used by Economic Development Department. Next on the list, we have cooperative purchasing agreement procurements over 250,000. We are requesting the board approve the following cooperative purchases. Requisition number 162773 for the amount of 350,000. Supplier is Holbrook Asphalt Company, and the item is pavement preservation. This is to be used by Public Works. The next cooperative purchasing agreement is for procurements over, well, between 100,000 and 250,000. The board is hereby notified of the following cooperative purchases made with that value. We have PO number 246035, amount 163,530, $530.53 for Santan Ford. The item is a 2021 F-550. This is for the Public Works Department. Next, we have PO number 246083, in the amount of 108,509.53 for Schwartz Industries. This is for Schwartz Street Max Patcher. This is also to be used by Public Works. Then we have PO number 246092, in the amount of 196,026.71. The supplier is Vanguard Truck Center of Phoenix. The item is a Mack Granite 64FR, and the department is Public Works. Next on the list is PO number 246097. The amount is 235,46.16 for Dooley Enterprise, Inc. This is for ammunition, ammunition for the Sheriff's Department. And the final PO number is 245728, in the amount of 133,672 for knowledge services, and this is for temp worker services, and this is to be used by the Attorney's Office. And finally, we have competition and practical bull procurement purchases over 100,000. This is per Pinellas County Procurement Code Section PC 1-350, governing competition and practical purchases over 100,000. We have one item, the amount is 235,411.38. This is for Asela, and this is for software renewal. The department is Information Technology. And that concludes the purchasing division report for September 29th.
Thank you, Ms. Edman. Any questions? Supervisor Kavanaugh?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't know if, oh, there's Mr. Volkmer. On the temp workers, what is that for?
Ken Volkmer, Pinellas County Attorney. Chair, may I?
Yes.
Supervisor Kavanaugh, it's a great question. We have temporary projects that occur in our office. For example, we have a bunch of boxes that need to be scanned pursuant to state statute. We don't have the adequate staff right now. However, I think there's a young lady earlier who said, "If you bring in a full-time staff, we never shrink, we only grow." So when we identify individual projects that don't have long-term viability, it's more fiscally responsible for us to come and ask for temporary workers. We're not required to pay EREs, there's that temp service that we contract through, but there, we use them for very specific services or very specific projects that need to be done. Typically, they, they end up being in the admin, or as we're moving to a new building and we're moving digital, we've got 50 years' worth of paperwork that we're really trying to eliminate, so when we make our move, we are as efficient as possible, and we don't just have rooms full of paper that we no longer need.
And this 133,000, how long does that cover generally? I know it's, the need changes.
I would anticipate that that's probably almost a full year's worth.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely. Just so you know, Supervisor, I believe they pay somewhere in the neighborhood of about $20 an hour. So just looking at that, I figured that's probably about four full-time employees for a year. That's how I came to that number, and that's my best guess estimate as I sit here.
Sounds like a smart use of resources. Thank you.
And we have a lot of departments that use temporary help on situations like that. So, anyway, any questions? Any other questions for the purchasing report? Hearing none, do I have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the purchasing report dated September 29th, 2021.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, say nay. I just have it, thank you. Brings us to item number six, consent items. All items indicated by an asterisk will be handled by a single vote as part of the consent agenda unless a board member, county manager, or the member of the public objects at the time, the agenda item is called. And we do have some items that have already been requested to be pulled, so I'll go over that. It's C, G, I, and BF. Does anybody else on the board want anything removed? County manager? From the public? Seeing none? Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve consent items A through...
BG.
Thank you. BG, minus CGIMBF.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, say nay. I just have it, thank you. So, C. Who do we have here, Natasha?
For item C, this is gonna be Supervisor Kavanaugh's appointment of Mr. Rick Sanchez.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
You have an appointment?
Mr. Chairman. Fred Rick Sanchez, we're going to reappoint as a member to the Law Enforcement Merit Council. Mr. Sanchez is a retired sheriff deputy and has served as a volunteer in various positions in the county, and we're honored to have him, his service and his wisdom, and, and we thank him for continuing to serve. So we have a, I think we have a certificate and a picture, is that now or later?
After the vote.
After the vote, okay.
Okay. I recognize the face though. Thank you for serving, and we always appreciate, you know, the general public that, that sit on these boards and commissions for us because, well, the pay is so good. That's it. Thank you so much. Okay, so do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the reappointment of Fred Rick Sanchez of Mammoth, Arizona, to the Law Enforcement Merit Council. Item C as presented.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, say nay. You're good. Kavanaugh, did you wanna go out there and give him his certificate? All right. Thank you. Brings us to item G. Ms. Cooper.
Good morning, Chairman, members of the board. Stephanie Cooper, the interim elections director. For item G, there was a typo...
The microphone a little closer to you, if you don't mind.
Sorry, is that better?
Yeah.
Okay. For item G, there was a typo on the reference to the ARS statute. It should be 16531 instead of 16351. That is it.
Okay. Everybody good with that?
Mr. Chair. I move we approve as presented with correcting the item description as follows pursuant to ARS 16-531.
Perfect. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, say nay. I just have it, thank you.
For the next one, too.
For the next one, too. Which is I, correct?
Yes. So for letter I, the resolution that had been originally submitted left off Mr. Guy Rankin for the second vacancy that that Florence area watershed flood control district has. So an amended resolution has been submitted to the clerk with his name on it.
With the correct name on it, okay. Any other questions? Do I have a motion?
Chairman, just for the record, the corrected resolution has been provided to the clerk of the board's office.
Okay, okay, for the record. She has a copy of the corrected resolution. Do I have a motion to move forward on item I?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve item I as presented, correcting the inclusion of Mr. Guy Rankin's appointment to the four-year board direction, director position to the resolution.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, say nay. I just have it, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes?
I intended to pull item K because I think there may be an error. Is it too late to pull that?
Okay, I need a help here. K? Item K, Mr....
We can reconsider.
We can reconsider?
Okay.
Okay.
Do I need to make a motion to reconsider the, make a motion to reconsider inclusion of item K on the items pulled from the consent agenda?
Is that, is that adequate for your motion? I'm gonna commit the...
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I believe Mr. Kavanaugh's motion is correct to reconsider the items previously approved with the addition of taking item K separately.
So I would make a motion that we reconsider the items previously approved to include item K.
Okay.
I hope I got that right.
Fantastic. Do I have a second to that?
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. I just have it. But I'm gonna go ahead, and let's do BF, and then we'll go back to K, is that okay, Mr. Kavanaugh? Supervisor Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Okay. So, we have here, Diane Powers removing illegal parcel, the motion. We have to remove and remove this one parcel number. So, can I get a motion and basically that removes the parcel number?
Mr. Chair. Natasha.
Natasha.
Just in case the board would like an explanation for the item.
Oh.
We do have staff available.
Okay. I've got a busy day today, so I'm running with track shoes on, so...
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Item BF, this parcel, the particular 4021712908, this has been redeemed by the heir of the taxpayer as they are deceased. So this has been redeemed, so it no longer needs to be submitted as a treasurer's deed.
Oh, I see, okay. So, so they picked up the taxes on it, okay.
Thank you for that explanation. Mr. Chair, if I could make a motion, please?
Absolutely, thank you.
I move that we approve item BF as presented, removing parcel number 402-17-12908.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, say nay. I just have it, very good, thank you. Now, item K?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
Just prior to the meeting, I looked at this item, and I noticed that on the list of voter precincts and supervisor districts on the last page, it appears that 103 is missing from the list. It may have been removed on purpose, and then the condensed precinct parts with district listing doesn't include the rest, but they may not need to have to be on this list because there's no additional precinct part. Is Ms. Cooper still available?
No, I think she left as soon as her two items were there. Can somebody, can somebody grab her? Has she gone, has she left the building? Oh, okay. How about Mr. Patel, is he around?
Mr. Chair, may I ask a quick, Mr. Kavanaugh, your Supervisor Kavanaugh, you're saying that one of the precincts is missing the partial number at the end?
So, let me turn to that page. On... On this list... Number 103 is, appears to be missing, so that would be up toward Kearney, as I recall from the map. And then, the, there's a 30-page condensed precinct parts with district listing, and on that page... on that page, the-
The last page.
Ends at ninety-nine, so I don't know if that means that there are no precinct parts that should have been included in one hundred through one oh five, or if this is correct.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Supervisor Kavanaugh, we're trying to reach out to Colleen, who may have worked on this item with Stephanie, to see if she has any additional information. She was here and she went back to the office, so I have sent an email asking if she can return for this item. So maybe if we could go ahead and, you know, continue, not continue this, but come back to this item-
Can I just suspend the, the discussion on it right now?
And, and come back to this item, you know, later. That way, we may not have to continue it if we can get sufficient answers to satisfy Supervisor Kavanaugh, uh, on these questions. Otherwise, your other option would be to continue this item to, uh, next week's item to get more information, have Stephanie available.
Mr. Chairman, I think this is time-sensitive. I think it has to be approved by the first. I vaguely recall there's a date deadline, so perhaps-
Yeah.
Let's get Colleen.
Yep, and that I'm not aware of, so I'll-
We'll get Colleen. I'm gonna suspend the discussion on it at this point, can I do that? I mean, you're good with that, right? We'll keep going through the agenda, we get staff back in here, then we'll come back to this item. Okay? Everybody good with that? So, trying to figure out where I'm at here now. So, uh, I'm going to actually recess the, um, Board of Supervisors meeting and move to the Desert Vista Sanitary District Board Meeting. Which, um, has, uh, consent items on it. All, all items indicated by an asterisk will be handled by a single vote, uh, as part of the consent agenda unless board member, county manager, or a member of the public objects at the time, the, the item is called. So we have, it looks like, A and B in the consent. Is there any questions on the, uh, Desert Vista Sanitary District? Hearing and seeing none, we'll move, do I have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve consent items A and B as presented.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, thank you. I am going to adjourn the Desert Vista Sanitary District Board Meeting, and we will move to the, uh, Penal County Public Health Service District Board of Directors. Agenda item, we had two, we have one item now, which is basically the minutes, I believe, of the, um, previous meeting of September one. So do I have a motion to, um, approve item number one of, of the Penal County Public Health Service District?
Hey, Mr. Chair, I move we, we approve item number one for the Penal County Public Health Services District.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it. I will adjourn the Public Health Services Meeting. So I think that brings us to item number nine, and I see Ms. Colleen. Hold on a second. And I reconvene the Board of Supervisors meeting. Thank you. Hold on, 'cause I may go to, back to K real quick, so we can get that behind us.
Mr. Chairman, if we could also hold off on that a little bit longer, I understand that Stephanie has been contacted and she's on her way back, so she'll be here to hopefully answer some additional questions.
Then we'll move to item number nine on the agenda, um, which does include a public hearing, I will call that after the presentation. Go ahead.
Thank you. Good morning, Chairman, Vice Chair, and Board Members. Sangita Deuker presenting, uh, the case, PZPD zero zero one dash twenty. This proposal is an amendment to request, uh, requesting modifying an original development standards and a planned area development overlay district, uh, for a portion of nine sixty-two acres. Uh, this amendment is restricted to three twenty-one point thirty-eight acres, um, and it is located at the intersection of Papago Road and Green Road, southwest of the city of Maricopa. The owner applicant is, uh, Amarillo Creek, uh, South LLC, and the applicant is CBL Consultants. We have Agent Julie Vermillion representing, uh, CBL Consultants. This is the county map showing the location of this, uh, amendment. Uh, one can see that it is on the western portion of the Penal County, uh, marked with a yellow, uh, and red star. The area map showing the, uh, the red portion that is going, uh, for the amendment proposal, and one can see the surrounding, uh, land use for this, uh, largely residential on the northeast, west, uh, and the south portion of this, uh, proposal. The comprehensive plan, uh, showing moderate low density, one up to three point five dwelling units per acre. And the existing zoning for this is CR two, uh, pad and a CB two pad. The CB two pad is on the north, um, northeast portion of this hatched blue parcel. It seems to have been camouflaged, but it's a small parcel. I will, um, show that in the next slides. This is the aerial, uh, of this, uh, location for, uh, the, um, pad amendment, and one can see that it's largely undeveloped agricultural land. It's still under, uh, development phases in different, uh, portions of the county. You can see that on the east, western portion is, uh, developed, uh, to some extent. This is the existing site plan that was, uh, approved, uh, in the prior case, and, um, the orientation of this, uh, plan is, uh, east-west and not, not-south, so, um, one can see that the commercial portion, which I was talking about, is marked in, um, red circle, which is, which was proposed and approved as ten point nine acres. One can also see that in the existing plan, and there's a central school site for twelve acres that was approved. The proposed site plan is largely the same, uh, circulation plan. What I have highlighted in the, uh, parcel fifteen is the reduction from ten acres approximately to eight point nine four acres of the commercial portion. That's the amendment part. And also, one can see the, the mixes, the lot mix that have been, uh, proposed in this, uh, as forty-five to one-twenty, fifty-five, one-twenty-five lots, and, uh, reduction in the commercial portion. The site of, for the school still remains the same. The street, uh, pattern is very much, uh, intact, the way it was approved as prior, uh, in the prior case. The amendments for the land use, one can see that there is, uh, uh, increase in number of lots, uh, from one zero eight six to one one zero five lots. Uh, this does not change the density of the proposal, the density still remains three point five dwelling units per acre. Uh, open space, in fact, has increased from nineteen percent to twenty percent. And the lot mix, the larger lots have been, um, eliminated, and, uh, there are more lots that are proposed for the forty-five, uh, by one-twenty and fifty-five by one-twenty-five lots. So you can see that change. There is a decrease on the larger, uh, lots, there, but there's an increase in the forty-five feet by one-twenty lots. The development standards as, um, as seen on the, uh, on the, uh, presentation is showing the lot mix, the proposed minimum lot width as forty and fifty-five, uh, front yards twenty and ten, uh, side yards as five and five or ten and zero, uh, rear yard as fifteen and twenty. Distances between buildings is ten feet, and the maximum building height as thirty feet. So, uh, there's not much difference in what was approved as prior, uh, CR three. The phasing plan, as, uh, shown in this map, is the phase one, which includes the school site and the commercial portion, and the phase two, uh, shows the green portion, which is the residential part of this, uh, amendment. The open space and recreational plan shows, uh, well, uh, defined, I would say, open spaces, small tot lots, and you can also see pocket parks being, uh, planned, um, at entry, prim, the primary entry also having, uh, green spaces, a water body, and, uh, areas around the central school site having large, uh, interspersed greens, uh, which does have the circulation, pedestrian movements, which are well-connected through the whole, um, development. Uh, this shows the, uh, circulation trails connectivity, uh, showing the local streets, major collector, which is purple and, uh, orange miner, um, collectors, and the walkways and, uh, pedestrian connections. Some pictures taken, uh, on the site while posting, looking towards the north. Uh, this is towards the south, the east, and the west. Items for both, uh, consideration, the commercial area has reduced from ten point nine to eight point nine four. Lots have increased, uh, there are added nineteen lots. Elimination of larger, uh, lot sizes, there's increased open space from nineteen percent to twenty percent. There's no change in the approved circulation per the prior case, which was PZPD zero sixteen, um, zero three, which is two, uh, which was approved in two thousand and three. There's no change in the overall density, three point five dwelling units per acre remains the same. Uh, the product has limited visual change and does not really impact any public safety. We did have some letters in opposition, uh, prior to the PNZ hearing, uh, after which we have not received, most of their questions were answered at the PNZ, uh, commission meeting. Staff recommended approval, and so did the PNZ approval, with twenty-five stipulations as added in the staff report. I'm open to any questions. We also have the applicant, if you have any specific questions for, uh, the applicant, too.
Okay. Any questions? At this point? I, 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 I do, I just, can you go back to, I think it was either the first or second slide?
Okay.
I'm just-
Is this the one I talked about?
Uh, okay, right, um-
This one?
Forward, yeah. So, well, so the, so to the north shows another subdivision, but it's, apparently is not built.
Under development.
No.
Under development?
It's under development, right, as we speak.
Is it?
Yes.
Okay. So, um, I was just curious, I mean, and is that, is that Maricopa, or is that still in the county? That one that's underdeveloped, that's being developed right now?
It's the county.
It's the county as well.
It's county, it's just south of Ockin.
Okay. Okay. All right, that's all the questions I had. Okay, well, I'm gonna open up the public hearing. Is there, um, any, anybody from the public that wants to comment on this portion of the agenda, item number nine? Seeing none? I will close the public hearing and, uh, ask for the board's pleasure. We have, nobody wants to make a motion on this? Yeah?
I would, I move that we approve item nine as presented.
Second. I have a motion and a second.
Chairman, for item nine, if, in that motion, if we can just include those twenty-five stipulations.
The twenty-five stipulations.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we approve item number nine with the twenty-five stipulations.
Three second. And, uh, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it. Okay. Now, I'm gonna stop there and go back to K.
Hi.
So, are you aware of the question, and-
Yes.
Is everybody, okay.
So, if you look on the condensed precinct parts with districts listing, which is the second attachment in the, um, three attachments that were there.
Okay.
They're right underneath precinct ten, it goes into the one hundreds. So they're a little bit out of order based on how the reports are pulled from the system, but one oh three is on that list. And it's, oop, go back up to-
Page, page four.
Yep. So one oh three is right there, and then it is listed on the map. The third item that had the precincts with the supervisor districts, it is left off of that one, so we would need to amend that form. However, it is listed on the other three, or other two attachments.
Okay, so it's missing off of one of the forms?
Just one of the attachments for backup documentation that was provided.
Okay. So we, so on a motion, we need to add that?
The attachment with, I think it's the top one.
List.
That one is the one that's missing, the one oh three, however, it is on the other two.
It's on the other two?
Yes.
Help us out with a little language here. Just to add precinct one oh three to document voter precinct and supervisor district.
Chairman, my recommendation, um, for the motion would be to approve as presented with the inclusion of one oh three, um, to the attached document of voter precincts and supervisor districts.
Okay. That, good with that? Can I get a motion that kind of reflects what Natasha just gave us?
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we approve item K with the inclusion of precinct one oh three on the voter precincts and supervisor districts, um, list.
Okay, thank you.
I second what he said.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it. K is passed.
Thank you.
Thank you for- Brings us to item number ten, which does include a public hearing as well, so, um, Sangita?
Thank you. Once again, Sangita Deuker presenting the case, SUP zero zero four dash twenty-one. Good morning, once again, Chair, Vice Chair, and Board Members. Uh, this is a, this is a case, uh, which requesting for a special use permit, uh, to operate a seventy-three-feet-tall wireless communication lattice tower, um, by ADNT in the general rural zone, it is a portion of the parcel. Uh, the size is forty plus minus acres. Uh, the location is north along the North Mammoth Mine Road on East Highway eighty-eight in the northern portion of Apache Junction. The owner application, applicant, sorry, is Robert Scholes and Steve Olson. Uh, this is the county map, uh, showing the location of this, uh, proposed special use permit, uh, and you can see that it is marked by the yellow, uh, red star in the Apache Junction in the northern portion of the Penal County. The vicinity map for, uh, this location, as shown in red, is surrounded by the BLM land, and you can see that it's, um, are largely, um, I would say, open, and, uh, there's development to the south along Mecalips Boulevard. The comprehensive plan shows this as, um, marked as recreation conservation area, and this is- is part of, uh, the Goldfield Mine, Old Mine Town area. The existing zoning for this is, one can see is CB two, which is, which was in the central portion of this parcel, and it is general rural for the hatched portion where the SUP has been requested for. One can also see that it's general rural all around. The area map for the, showing the parcel, which is a commercial zone, which is in the center of this pink portion, and SUP is for the green, uh, sorry, the general rural area. The aerial map showing, um, the development, which was the historic mine town area, and it is currently, um, used as, by the tourists to, to kind of go and see what it was like, and it does have that feel of the old mine town. It does have some recreational activities and some tourist activities too that go on. The site plan over here shows the, uh, the red portion, which is just outside of the commercial portion, marked in the rectangular north-south portion, uh, but, but the one which is zoomed down, uh, into the larger, uh, blue area is the portion where this tower is going to be proposed. And this is, uh, again, showing the detailed site plan, showing the parking on the right side and the lattice tower and, and the way it is, is designed. The elevation of the tower, trying to mimic the, uh, old mining town and giving that rustic look is, um, it's what it is shown on this picture, and it's, the height is seventy-three feet for this tower. This map are, is showing the coverage for ADNT without the tower, and the next map is going to show the coverage, uh, for ADNT with the tower, just showing that it's, uh, extent that it would be able to give this coverage. Some pictures taking, taken when gone for the posting, uh, this is a two, looking towards the north, uh, towards the south on the road, uh, to the east, uh, and to the west. Some recommendations for approval findings, um, which considers SUP's permits following the criteria that the need for this special use, uh, serves the need for the area by increased public safety with better wireless coverage for first responders, and the design of this facility disguised as a mining head frame that blends with the mining theme, gold feast, uh, gold field goes down. We did get a response in support from the surrounding property owner that was in support, uh, which was within three hundred feet. PNZ approved, uh, with fifteen stipulations, um, and there were some changes that were discussed during that time for stipulations three, five, and nine. I will take you to the, the slide, uh, or each stipulation separately. The earlier one which was discussed or was shared with the PNZ was a solid block masonry wall, and there was a request by the applicant to have a corrugated tin enclosure wall, uh, so that again, it, uh, it blends and it mimics this, the mining town theme area, so, uh, which was agreed by, uh, the PNZ. The other one is submitting the engineer certification with thirty days of year's approval that facilitates and complies with all FAA, and the radiation meets the Federal Communication Commission requirements. There was an additional, uh, statement that was removed, should interference be determined to exist with WAPA communications equipment, building permits shall not be issued. This was not valid in this case, there is no building permits, and therefore, this part was dropped from the stipulation for, uh, number five. The number nine, uh, this being an existing, uh, already an existing, uh, facility, uh, and, uh, they already have a paved road arterial access to the project, which, um, in my earlier stipulations meant, uh, was having paved road access with project and paved parking lots, they already have it, so we removed that portion of the stipulation. So, it does have, uh, the existing paved, um, uh, road arterial, arterial access to the project. So, these were the updated stipulations, three, five, and nine, um, with fifteen stipulations in total. I'm open for questions, and we also have the applicant, uh, your, if you do have any specific questions regarding the wireless tower.
Any questions?
I don't have any questions, just comments. I think it goes hand in hand with what we talked about last meeting about, yeah, expanding our broadband. I live up in that area and there's a lot of dead spots, and there's also a lot of wilderness area, so it would help to keep everybody safe up there.
Thank you. Any questions? Supervisor coming up.
Mr. Chairman, I think the notes that we had is this was part of FirstNet, and that's, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so this is part of the nationwide public safety.
That's correct.
So, this would increase broadband coverage for first responders.
Okay. Okay, any other questions? Okay, I'm gonna open up the public hearing for this agenda item. Anybody wanna comment on this item? Item number ten. Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Board's pleasure.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt or approve item number ten as presented with the, I'm looking for the stipulations.
Fifteen.
Fifteen.
With the fifteen stipulations listed.
Okay, I have, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, say, oppose, say nay. I just have it, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, brings me to item number eleven. Discussion approval, disapproval of termination of contract two-two-zero-eight-two-six-one, or is that IFB?
That's correct, IFB.
FB.
Hello again, Chairman, fellow board members. For item number eleven, we recommend the board approve the termination of contract two-two-zero-eight-two-six-one, sorry, two-two-zero-eight-two-six-I-F-B with waste connections of Arizona DBA right-of-way disposal for commercial refuse collection and public recycling services as requested by the supplier and their termination letter.
Okay, any questions? Board's pleasure.
Mr. Chair, I'd make a motion that we approve item number eleven as presented.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, say nay. I just have it, thank you. Takes us to item number twelve, discussion and pending, um, regards, oh, this is the presentation for Gold Canyon Community. Who is, Mr. Ravelas, I see your name here on the, on the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Roberto Ravelas, longtime resident of Gold Canyon. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, over the last twenty years, I've been an interested and involved civic participant, participant in the board of supervisors proceedings, but most recently as a member of Gold Canyon Community, Inc. Our organization's partnership with the board began two and a half years ago, when we came to the board with a community problem of traffic congestion involving the buildup and impact of seven hundred new houses south of Sleepy Hollow Trail in the new, uh, project Peralta Canyon. Since then, we've interacted with the board, not only with community problems, but also bringing you proposed solutions. Uh, two and a half years later now, our nonpartisan and nonprofit Gold Canyon Community, Inc. continues its commitment to a constructive working relationship and partnership with Penal County Government and other public and private groups. Because Gold Canyon is unincorporated, its residents depend on the county for essential services and for a long-term community development plan, a plan that would provide a process and a guide to the growth of our community. For those reasons, we're committed to gathering the best credible data that can contribute to your board's creation of a visionary and sustainable community development plan to which all residents of Gold Canyon can contribute to ensure the quality of life is best guided. Today, our presentation will focus on a critical element of thoughtful, common sense planning. Key to that process is the gathering and examination of credible data with the valuable assistance of Arizona State University, which historically has fulfilled its charter's basic commitment of, quote, "Assuming fundamental responsibility for the communities it serves", unquote. A prime example of that community serving role is Tempe Town Lake, a community project which ranks as a popular and unique public water recreation attraction that has generated close to two billion dollars in economic impact for the area since its transformation from an overlooked dry riverbed. What the public largely does not know is that this environmental and economic success story began in nineteen sixty-seven and nineteen sixty-eight as a project of Arizona State University's College of Architecture students. Here to tell us about a community service project dedicated now to the Gold Canyon Community by the university and its students is Dr. Sarbaswar Praharaj. First, a very brief mention of Dr. Praharaj's impressive credentials. He serves as the Assistant Director of the Knowledge Exchange for Resilience Unit and is an Assistant Research Professor at Arizona State University's School of Geographical Science and Urban Planning. This is facilitated by generous grant from the Virginia G. Piper Trust, and thereby the residents group links university-wide research expertise and innovative element to a multi-sector community needs in order to build resilient communities. Dr. Praharaj has trained academically and worked professionally with clients across our entire globe, from Australia, India, King's College, London, to our neighboring ASU. At a time of divisive, conspiracy-fueled argument in our neighboring county, we are proud to bring to the public policy chamber proposals based on truth, transparency, and But first, let me know for the record that the sometime philosopher Woody Allen once proclaimed, "The world is run by those who show up." Sadly, the people who were here previously criticizing our activities aren't here. They aren't showing up. So, it's in that spirit of coming to the board here, because you do run our world, and I continue to encourage and invite, as I have for the past two and a half years, other members of our community, including Glenn Walp and Adobe, and the new organizations he is forming right now to ally themselves with him. Without any further introduction, I want to introduce you to Dr. Praharaj.
Okay. Thank you, Roberto.
Thank you, Chairman.
Yes.
Thank you, Vice Chairman, and members of the board. It's a pleasure to be here and be amongst some of esteemed colleagues, um, in this great land.
For, for the record, your name?
My name is Sarbeswar Praharaj, um, Dr. Sarbeswar Praharaj, to be exact.
Thank you.
And, uh, you know, Arizona State University, as we all know, is a public research university dedicated to community service, and this is one of such exercises that we are doing in, in, in meeting that goal and, and those objectives that the university has set. And, you know, there are a lot of questions, why is ASU here? What is their interests, you know? What brings them here? What is their motivation? A lot of questions may arise, and I'm here to clear some of that air and kind of set the stage of what we are looking at and why we are here, okay? So, as it was mentioned, it's a student project, and we are a public research university, and we, our main resources are our students. And this is a department that I present, which is called the School of Geographical Sciences and Urban Planning, which is a unique combination of expertise of GI science and planning. And so, this has historically been some of the most siloed departments, exercises, as the gentleman was examining, you know, talking about architecture, and, and architecture and planning has been in a silo, and, and there has been also talk about how do we do geographical science? How do we talk about our lands? And so, these departments kind of combines the land management, the GI science, with planning and, and community development. And if you see what our core expertise, where do the most research come out from this department? Computational spatial science, as I was talking about, lots of geographical scientists, um, engineers are working to solve some of the critical challenges that we face. Community development and social equity, we always focus on social equity, whatever we do, wherever we go, we have to see that we listen to all and, and make a plan that impacts equitably across the communities, regardless of their, um, origin, or their economic status, or whatever divisions that we have in our society. Place identities and culture, it's very critical to our, um, work. Spatial economic analysis, some of the mentions came out, the Tempe Town Lake, and we continue to do several projects that revitalize communities, how do we renew older areas or plan for newer areas to attract new investment, so that kind of projects we do. Transportation planning, sustainability science and urban design, they're all part of the core, uh, projects and, and research that comes out from this department. And so, this student project sits within a specific course within these larger departments. The, this department offers about fifteen different courses, and this is master of urban and environmental planning. And so, this course, um, as you can see, is ranked among the top in the nation and, and worldwide. And this is a graduate course, this is very important to mention here. So, our students who will come and work here have already got an advanced undergraduate degree, so they come from architecture or undergraduate in planning, economics, and so they already have a substantial knowledge developed through their undergraduate degree, and this is a place where they experiment and, and do something which is constructive and applied to the community level. And so, if you see what we are trying to see here among the students that will come about, what do you offer and, and how is it beneficial? We create a living laboratory environment, and this project that we are going to do with your support and, and cooperation is, is the perfect example of living laboratory. So, often we do teaching in the classroom, students be in the classroom, we talk a lot, and we do a lot, do a lot of exercise, but that often sits as somewhere in the corner of the house and doesn't go out and impact communities. And so, this project and, and this course is designed in a way that students go out to the community, they study the community, and then plan rather than sitting in the house, you know, sitting with us and talking a lot and doing all those internet search and coming up with plans. And so, this is a fundamental difference that we are trying to bring through this course. Interaction with planning leaders, we Interaction with planning leaders, we want our students to come and interact with all sorts of leaders in the community, who are the first responders, who are the landowners, who are the business leaders, who has an interest and vision to change the community. And that vision needs to be taken into account in the planning, and that is another dimension that we provide to the students through this course. Navigate complexities of current issues is critical. Our world is changing with the pandemic and whatnot, and our cities becoming more complex, urban areas are getting more diverse, and therefore, this course is designed in a way that students decipher those complexities. How do they work with multi-interests, multiple organizations, and form a collaboration that can result in an integrated planning? That is one of the challenges that we are trying to address. And of course, as ASU's core ethos, we are committed to research-led education. Whatever we learn in the community, whatever planning we do that feeds back into the research and publications and impact that we generate for the community. So I'm sorry if this is, this might not be that readable to the audience, but in general, this Master of Urban and Environmental Planning has eight core courses over a period of two years, and this course, the students who are going to come and study, this course is called Urban Land Use Planning, which I chair. So I chair this course called Urban Land Use Planning, which is kind of a course, that introduction of applied planning research, and that kind of students go out and work on a particular project. But it's important to mention here, because there are several other courses, and students are not always having that much time to, you know, allocate, but we have a four months of a core course, and therefore, the time, and I have 40 of my students, so there's a significant amount of time and expertise that we can delve into this project. So Urban Land Use Planning, this course, is actually an overview, that students are provided an overview of land use planning concepts, frameworks, institutions, and movements, and that kind of explores the complexities that are saying, the processes of planning and the professional skills that is required to go out and plan for the community and manage growth effectively. And there are the kind of learning objectives we have through this course that is also in the website, but this is basically that why planning matters, why is it important for the community and for us? Article clear vision of what constitutes a plan, what are the components of a land use plan, and how do we go out and address the economic, environmental, social, and cultural challenges through a land use plan? And, you know, how do they go out and plan for a real-world context? As I always repeatedly refer, it's most critical that we plan for a real-world context, and that gives them the professional and capacity. When they pass out, they become a resource for these communities. And of course, the governance and participation, how do we interact with these planning leaders? How do we interact with the complex community groups and organizations? And there are critics who are their supporters. How do we navigate these different comments and suggestions and come up with a plan that impacts and benefits all? So that's the kind of course objectives that we have. So in planning for this project, this course actually have three different components, if I can break down to simplify this. One is that the students have discussions and readings in the classroom that provides them with the theories and backgrounds of the course, what is land use plan and all sorts of things, like how do we manage urban growth, what are the management processes, policies, case studies from across the world and, of course, from the United States. The students are exposed to the best practices, what is available in the market. The second component is really the technical skills. It's not just the theoretical skills. We offer them the GIs, GI science capabilities. How do they use software to map subtle land use? How do they simulate future growth? How can they project what is going to happen in the community in the future because of the housing, because of the population change and economic change? So that kind of simulation and modeling expertise is provided through this course. And finally, the component that Gold Canyon Community Plan Student Project. So that theoretical knowledge, the technical expertise will enable students to come and study the community and use softwares and use their knowledge to apply in this real world. So that's drawing up all those experiences they will have through the course. So if I can see the modules or what is the workflow looks like, we have baseline study that we're going to start beginning January 10. Okay? That's our start, that how do we look at the existing land use? How do we look at the existing demographic and social and economic structure? What is already from the census and other secondary data sources that we have already? Housing, existing infrastructure, transport, what are supply conditions that sustain our communities? And of course, the environment. I really understand from the engagements that this is an ecologically sensitive land, there are a lot of conservation priorities as well, and so we study all those existing conditions, that is, we call the baseline study. And that data will also be combined with this very interesting and exciting community survey that I think has already gone out. We are working with GCCI, you know, again, seeing the best practices and developing this questionnaire that people can respond to. It is extremely important that our students just don't do the data cleaning and data mapping and then coming out with a plan. What is the community saying? What are their priorities? What are the challenges? And that needs to integrate with the secondary data. So that community survey is a critical piece before we go into setting out the community development goals and objectives. So that is very, very critical, because community survey and baseline conditions will lead towards that definition of what is the future goal. And that often, you know, is a gap. When we started this project, we thought, okay, secondary data, we can do it. We always do it. Academics love it, but we need to listen to the community. I think some of the gentlemen earlier were saying, talk about the people. Yes. And so we urge people to come out and participate in the survey. We are doing whatever we can to facilitate that. And so that then leads to us action plans. So we will have action plans for each of these sectors, okay, that we're going to plan for. So the future land use plan basically would be comprising of these land use classifications. So we'll come up with a density, zoning guidelines, with a character plan of how each of these areas can be divided into different areas, not just economy, but environment, housing, you know, public services, community facilities, where those will be located, and we can come up and do that kind of a land use plan. And of course, conservation and recreation, another very important module that we focus on, we're going to see how, where are the recreational facilities, where are the tourism potential, what are the conservation priorities, all those, how do they reflect in the physical land use map? And of course, the future resource need, you know? We want to calculate what is the infrastructure demand that's going to come in future because of the population change, and how much is it going to cost in terms of resources allocated? Who will do that? What are the kind of institutional change that might need to happen? So all of that would be part of the future land use plan. And so that's the kind of four different stages that we are looking at at this point. That stopped moving. Thank you. Yeah, so the last few slides, this is the book that students are going to refer to, very, very important book. Sorry for the academic point, but as I said, the first component is that students understand the theories, understand what are the best practices, and this is the book we are going to refer. So we have this ten copies of this book in library I have ordered. So this is kind of a very comprehensive book that has all those different components, from demography to economy, socioeconomic, environmental analysis, community facilities, all the components that students will be exposed to the first phase of the research. And so what does the timeline look like? You know, this course is just about three and a half to four months, so we don't have a lot of time, but we begin on January 10, and that is why I started engaging well ahead of time. January 10 is still three and a half months to go, and I started engaging with GCCI and PNL, you know, kind of three, four months back. So we are engaging because we need to set up the ground for the students to come and do the research rather than spending a lot of time, you know, coming and exploring and wasting a lot of time. So the ASU Urban Land Use Planning course officially starts October 10, and then the baseline analysis is the second stage, where we do the primary, the survey data, and also the secondary data analysis, and then we define goals and priorities, and of course, the proposals, the land use plan that meet the community development goals and objectives, and the ASU students, not me, ASU students would come and participate and present to the community, and that's what excites me, you know? As professors, we do a lot of research, but what, how can the students come and present to the community leaders? How can they get feedback and they become the next generation leaders, you know? And so then we provide a final report to you, you know, highlighting what we have found, what are the observations, and how we can go ahead, okay? And this is the kind of final report that we're going to conclude the study. These are some of the resource requirements that I'm continuously working. Before the students start their course, I'm kind of trying to get all sorts of background data sets, so that sets the stage for the students to come and apply their skills rather than they go out and do this. So we need a lot of support. We have got a lot of support, and we continue to engage and access these data sets to really leverage some of the existing information and, we don't want to go there and reinvent the wheel. There's already a lot of resource out there, and we have to leverage those resources. And so, as I was saying, ASU is a comprehensive research university. I sit as the Senior Global Futures Scientist in this laboratory. This is kind of one of its initiatives that is targeting the UN Development Goals and Community Development Goals worldwide. So we have about 150 leading researchers in this lab, which is called the Julian Global Futures Laboratory, again, from generous funding. And so I have access to these great resources, these great faculties and researchers who will come and inform students how they can move ahead. It's not just me, but a whole, and another NTD here, I'm the Associate Director, which is looking at resilience of communities. We're working a lot through this in building economic resilience dashboard, temperature and heat analysis through the evictions, we're working with the Mari Cooper Justice Codes to leverage their data and see what eviction's going to look like in the next month or couple of months. We're continuously working on these resiliency issues. So the students will be also getting a lot of resources from these centers, where people are sitting there with a lot of data, a lot of expertise, to bring them up to speed of where we need to go and where are the skills to do this. This is something that I just want to highlight, because there are members of the community, if somebody wants to come, so this is a fellowship that we provide. I sit as a Chair of this center. We provide some grants so that community members can also come and be part of our community, you know? They can work on their own projects, but they will get all of our expertise from students to the professors, and there are tremendous opportunity to co-work with other leaders. So we have people from MAG, people from Center for the Future of Arizona, people from the Valley of the Sun United Ways, who are our fellows, who are working with us on several challenges that they face, and so this is something, an opportunity that you might also like to share among your groups. I think that's it. Thank you. Thank you very much for your attention.
Any questions?
I have a couple of questions. How many other studies like this have been done in the past? Are there others going on now, and do other universities do this?
Well, so this course, for example, just to give you a start off, last year, this course is running, as I said, this is a core course, right? Last year, we did a Mesa Central Canal Plan with the SRP. That was a very, very successful project. You know, there's a Mesa Canal, and they are trying to rejuvenate and trying to see how recreational facilities can balance with the housing and economic development, and our students work with that, and that was a pretty successful project. And out of this, you know, on an outer level, beyond this course, there are several other projects that are going on, okay? From mobile homes, but specifically on land use planning, we do a lot of work with Tempe and Phoenix cities, but I think this is one of its kind of experiment, that we are coming out of the Mari Cooper County and trying to understand how we can extend our reach and work with other communities as well. As somebody was saying that this project, the center where I sit is generously funded by the Virginia G. Piper Trust, which is primarily for the Mari Cooper County. But when you sit down and say, how do we go out of this, you know? Well, we're doing a lot of project with Mari Cooper County, but there are other communities that we are supposed to serve. We are funded by the Arizona, you know, the Board of Regents, and so we need to have an Arizona-wide approach in going out and planning for the communities. And I think this is also an opportunity that build from our experiences in Mari Cooper County and serve to other communities.
Does this happen in other universities around the country?
Absolutely, absolutely. So I, you know, this is like a past history, I am coming from Australia. I had been a decade in Australia before I came here. So how I came here is through such a partnership, a partnership which is called Plus Alliance, which I'm a fellow of. So Plus Alliance is a partnership between the King's College London, University of New South Wales, where I was in, and Arizona State University, and that kind of combines the strength. So when we did a very nice project on air pollution modeling, and so London was sort of a leading hub in air pollution modeling, we took their software, we took their expertise and applied that in Phoenix and Sydney, you know? We built the data set to that standard, which was not there, okay? But then we could model and saw that how can communities benefit from such collaborations.
And one other small question. So these are graduate students. Are they already students that are already working and have some part-time jobs?
Yes, yes. Many of them even come from professional experience. They have three, four years of experience before they come into masters. So they might be already working in an architectural firm or a planning firm with the government or a private, and they are, they come from all over the world. That's another exciting facet, that this is a graduate course, where you have people from the United States and from all over the world, so they bring that wealth of, you know, diversity in terms of their experience.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Supervisor Goodman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, this is something that you could tell from the beginning of our meeting today, there seems to be a huge gap that's been created and continues to grow with misunderstanding and misinformation.
Yeah.
And one of the things I'm seeing here, this is something, this actually, this plan right here that you're talking about kind of grew from what we did several years ago in Sandown Valley. And what we've accomplished there or where we're headed in the direction of trying to give more say for the citizens, to be able to be in more control. One thing I didn't realize is that this is an actual course that you're offering a master's degree to the individuals that are participating. But the other part is, is that you've got such a big gap that's already been created, and so there's going to have to be a lot of open meetings and things of that nature where you're continuously reaching out to other individuals and actually listening to and making that a part of your processes. You know, there's, in our situation, we had over 100,000 people that we were dealing with, and we still have that same issue and same problem, and it's so polarized that we're, I don't even, it's like herding cats, and so you're probably going to be in the same boat on this one, so. But kudos to you, and it's something that I absolutely think that needs to happen, but at the same time, make sure that you're continuously seeking the input from the community themselves and the stakeholders. You know, state land department has quite a bit there, and I can't emphasize that enough with state land department and other property owners in that area, that they're part of this process.
Yes.
Because what we're talking about doing is putting some substance to what that entire area looks like. So I commend you for your efforts, and thank you.
Thank you. Very, very important points, you know? We'll continue to engage, you know, with the communities, with the stakeholders as much as we can. And regarding the state land trust, very important point, actually, I have said a presentation, they will come to ASU, they will actually present in the second week of the lecture of how the landscape of the land ownership looks like. So they are absolutely on board with us in inputting the students what exactly the current scenario is, you know? And we'll continue to engage. Thank you for your observation.
I think I just want to make a couple of points. One, if somebody were to be at this meeting at the beginning at 9:30, you'd have thought that this whole process had already started, and from your presentation, which this is simply a presentation, you haven't started yet. So I don't know where the disconnect there is, and this study, there's nothing binding Penal County to the study. It is an exercise for which some graduate students are going to get to participate in and hopefully gain some knowledge and understanding. And I think, I think interacting with the area, the people of the area, every area would be different. So I think, in other words, I think it's a good thing to kind of hear, I'm hoping that everybody that was here speaking, I guess, somewhat against it participates, because I think you want to know what they're, what they see as, I hate using this term, quality of life really is, because everybody's quality of life is different. But anyway, so, you know, best of luck, and I think Penal County should be happy to help ASU. ASU do this real-life study kind of thing. And again, it doesn't bind Pinal County to anything, but you'll get some good information.
Thank you.
And some real-life experiences.
Thank you, Chairman. I'm looking forward to that.
Yes.
We're already having a lot of really interesting input.
Sure.
And as you were saying, you know, the air has already started getting hotter. And I was trying to, that's why I started long before the course, you know?
Yeah.
And so by the time, I hope the air kind of settles and there's a peace and, you know...
I think that was a good move. Okay. All right. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
If there's any other questions or comments, have a good day.
You too. Thank you.
Mr. Ravelas, do you have a...
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Just wanted to thank you for your patience in hearing our very great asset that we have available. $300,000 was devoted to Santan Valley. $300,000.
Yeah.
Here we have a public institution that's dedicated to serving all communities in Arizona. It's about time that we took advantage of services that our taxpayers have provided. And so it is in that spirit of bringing a resource and not sitting back and throwing rocks at people who are wanting to help the community. Everybody has had an opportunity to come before the people who run our Gold Canyon World. You do. I'm here, other people are here frequently, and so I'm inviting again and emphasizing the door is always open here in our publicly-owned building as the doors are to our nonprofit Gold Canyon Community Incorporated. And so thank you again, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, and I'm hoping that we will bring useful information that can be taken into consideration by the board at the proper time, and that without any obligation on anybody's part, we are happy to be part of this project. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Brings us to item number 13 on the agenda. Mr. Kavanaugh, establishing a Board of Supervisor Ethics Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Brad Miller is here today, and Brad assisted in putting this together, and I'm going to ask him to present some of the items, the origin of the ethics committee. The, I've run across items just since I've been here and my prior work in law enforcement where some things fall through their cracks in terms of ethics. And so I think it's wise to discuss an ethics, forming an ethics committee. And with that, I'll have Mr. Miller give a presentation about the item presented today.
Okay. And this is information only, and can be some discussion or questions by the board, but there is no action being taken today?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Just by way of background, I've had the good fortune of running numerous ethics programs, including aboard Camp Pendleton, Marine Corps Base Camp Pendleton, where I was an ethics attorney, ethics advisor, and officer. Also, last year, I deployed with the United States Marine Corps and ran their ethics program. So the reason for this particular presentation is to introduce to the board a model of an ethics program based off the federal model, which is the Office of Government Ethics. The Office of Government Ethics has numerous ethical principles that we will ask, eventually ask the board to adopt, including protecting the public purse, obviously not being financially invested in the particular decisions that each of the board members is making. So what we're going to present to the board is a multi-step program. The first is to have a committee with either one or a few board members in order to not violate the open meeting laws and members of the community. The purpose of that is to create an ethics, ethical principles for the board itself and also ethical principles for the county employees. After that comes out of committee, then that committee will present that to the board, and those particular ethical principles and rules will be binding on the board. Eventually, the ethics committee will come up with rules and obligations for the members and the employees of Pinal County. So that's the multi-step plan that we present, and I invite any questions, discussions, or anything from any of the board members.
Mr. Chairman, forgive me. The clerk of the board just notified me that the attachments didn't attach. So they're, somehow we didn't get an attachment, which has some of the proposed regulations, ethics responsibilities. And so I'm going to read those if I have liberty to do so.
Ah, yes, sure.
So...
I can, and can I just, this is going to be some examples, so we kind of understand where you're going, because I guess I'm still having a hard time grasping this.
So, well, the ethics committee, well, examples of issues or examples of solutions? I don't think it would be appropriate to go through real-time examples in this setting.
Understand. Okay. Well, just proceed, and we'll see where we end up.
I would ask, are there other, other Board of Supervisors that have this, other city councils that have it? Is it precedent somewhere else?
Yes, there are many cities, government entities that have ethics boards. And so when you run into problems, you know, we have a code of ethics that is sort of from management down. In fact, our county manager is reviewing, our staff is reviewing our code of ethics right now, because some of the language in the code of ethics for our county say should rather than shall. Some of the important things that are, that are before the should, should not happen in the county. So they're looking at that to change the language to make it more enforceable. And an ethics committee would simply establish rules. We would approve the ethics rules in the county and establish consequences for ethics violations, letters of admonishment. Obviously, for elected officials, you know, we don't, we're not subject to regular employment rules. But if the committee found that an elected official violated an ethics rule, then they could perhaps just issue a letter of admonishment.
I just want some clarity here. So this is ethics of elected officials?
From the top down. It would serve to guide the entire ethics rules for the entire county, but would include electeds as well. We should be able to live under the same rules that we establish for our employees.
Well, I don't know. My opinion is that the ethics committee meets every four years. It's an election, and they decide whether or not you've been ethical or not, pretty much. But, you know, I, and I, I really still am having a hard time kind of conceiving this, and I guess, give me the name of a town or a city or a county in Arizona that's using it today.
Mr. Chairman, currently, we have a, I'm sure you're familiar with the Merit Board that deals with ethical issues. There's also been ethics issues, I know, in case law, enshrining case law in both Pima County and I believe in Hila County, dealing with ethics issues regarding sheriff's department employees, lower-level employees, other things like that. So yes, there is precedent. Obviously...
Well, there's a, so they have a, they have an ethics committee, is what you're saying?
We do have an ethics committee. We call it the Merit Board.
Well, we have a merit board here.
But it does not apply to the Board of Supervisors or to elected officials.
We have two merit boards. We have one for law enforcement, and we have one for the rest of the employees.
Correct.
Okay.
So, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, is this a solution looking for a problem? I don't really get it.
I'm having a hard time understanding that, too. Go ahead. Why don't you go ahead and read what you have there, and we'll see if there's any other questions.
Sure thing. So we would establish some basic regulations, workflow. If someone, and for instance, I've been apprised of potential ethical violations and how to handle them appropriately would be a reason to establish an ethics committee. So we can address potential ethical problems one-on-one, but what is the responsibility of a supervisor when an ethical issue is brought that is not a criminal issue but does violate potentially our ethics code? So this would establish a protocol for doing that, how to handle these issues.
Okay. Right there, I'm just going to, the protocol, if there's something, you know, that I think is unethical, is against policy or procedure that we have in writing, I, that book's about this thick, if you printed it all out and tried to read it all, I would just turn it over to the county manager, and I'd say, this is what I found out, this is what I heard, this is what I believe, will you please investigate it?
Then you would, forgive me.
Well, and then I step aside, because as long as it's not me that's breaking the ethics, I'm getting uninvolved real fast.
And that, to your point, we would be instructing the county manager potentially to look at an ethics, at an ethics violation committed by a Board of Supervisor member.
Okay.
So that would be the wrong direction. We have a subordinate investigating or looking into an ethics violation by the board member.
Well, I would think that that would go, if it was that egregious, that it would also be taken to the county attorney's office. I mean, and that's, that's why we have civil and a criminal division of the county attorney's office. They would oversee, they would be ones determine whether or not that is unethical.
Well, so...
And I guess, we should probably clarify, ethics, I guess, bad ethics might not be illegal.
Correct.
So, so how you act is, is, might be, it might not be ethical, but it's not illegal?
Right.
Okay.
But we have a duty to serve the public in an ethical way.
Sure we do.
Although we may not violate law, it would be good to establish a set of rules for our electeds to follow and a protocol for providing an admonishment certainly of a violation of the ethics. Would you not agree?
No, I don't agree. Because I think that, if, you know, we have those in writing in what we call policies and procedures, and our staff, my staff, and the staff of all the other electeds in the other departments use that as a rule and guide for how we do procedure. If somebody's stealing something that's unethical and that's also criminal, and that's kind of a different situation. I don't know, I just have a hard time passing judgment on what may or may not be ethical.
Well, if a, I'm hesitant to give specific examples that I know of, but there are those situations, and perhaps we can speak with the county attorney at a executive session to go over some specific examples to provide more clarity.
I think we may need to do that, because I, and that's my, I don't know, and I, there's, I have three other supervisors here that may have different opinions and different questions, so I don't want to take up all the time. But if anybody has any other questions on this, and if you want to read your examples or your protocol, or whatever it is you want to call this...
We will, we will include this as part of the agenda, we'll forward it on over.
Okay. So...
I have nothing further at this time. Do you have anything further, any comments, Mr. Miller?
Just that it's extremely important. Obviously, our federal government, every federal department, our military, all follow ethical principles, and it's extremely important that the public knows that their elected officials are following government ethics. We also have, in Arizona states, our state are required to follow ethical principles. And so actually setting those rules and putting them and codifying them into a rule that needs to be followed and including a procedure is extremely important. As Chairman brought up, what is the procedure if there is an ethical violation? Well, we've given a couple of examples now. Is it the county manager, is it the county attorney? Those things should be codified, and that's all we're asking for today. Thank you.
Editorial comment, but I'll probably hold on to that. Okay. Brings us to the next item, number 14, which is management, supervisor management efficiency and waste reduction. Supervisor Kavanaugh.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So the purpose of this discussion is to examine the formation of a committee consisting maybe of a couple of board members, member of finance, budget, county management staff to examine items of financial interest and perform cost analysis and efficiency analysis. Mr. McClure, I think initially came up with this idea... Early on. So it's not new. Many government bodies have subcommittees to steer decision-making, to avoid waste, to create greater efficiencies, and to ensure that the public, the taxpayer funds are being used appropriately. So during the past eight months, for instance, we've had requests to add employees in various areas, and I recall that Chairman Miller objected to an IT technician for the courts. And we have the assessor's office requesting a few positions for the purpose of moving work through the process faster. And because the assessor's office request is fresh in our memory, I'll use that as my example. The committee would take a deeper dive into how far behind the assessor's office is as a result of new requests to explore whether a temporary situation, temp employees like the county attorney had the budget item today, would be best, would it be best to hire all four new employees for the assessor's office or any other office for that matter? And employee strategies to check these things out. Rather than hire employees and make large expenditures with guesswork and speculation, let's put some hard numbers to the, to the request, do a time study to determine if, in fact, these employees or these expenditures are needed. So we could, we could form a working group to discuss the details, how it would work. And because Supervisor McClure had brought up initially, and I've observed some what appears to be inefficiencies and lack of data when we're making decisions, I thought this might be a good subcommittee to establish, to make better decisions.
Well, I'm first to just say, I haven't been a hawk on that topic the last eight years. I don't know who has, because I'm known as the guy that says no, because I really do make them, the other departments or any department, any other elected, really justification. I try to see, you know, really how that's going to benefit the community going forward. Some I've been, I've approved, and some I haven't. But, you know, it's difficult, and I just wanted, because I always like to add this in, we don't make widgets. We don't have a product. We simply provide a service. I can't go up and say, hey, let's cut, let's cut the cost on recording documents this month and see if we can record more. It doesn't work that way. We don't have, we don't have an end. We don't have to produce something. All we have to do is make sure we're available for those services as they come in. And it ebbs and flows. And so we, at least for me, I've always tried to find that middle ground where I think that maybe, maybe things slow up, but if, you know, when things slow down, we'll still be at a good, a good point. So for everybody, and I think I get probably every call for request that's on an agenda, I get a call from that department or that elected, you know, really kind of going into detail on why they either need another position, or they need a piece of equipment, or whatever. And I appreciate that, because they know that I'm going to be very conscious of that in a debate. I'm sorry I've taken up some of this time.
Mr. Chair, may I?
I'm going to let Goodman go first, because he's been bugging me.
Oh, I know, he's throwing pebbles at you.
Well, I guess in regards to Supervisor Kavanaugh's scenario with our county assessor, is that something that we can actually go into the department, into that department, his department, and actually do an analysis on what's going on in there? Is that something that we can take a deep dive into legally?
We've done like some desk audits, I think, in the past at different places, and I don't want to get into a whole lot of the discussion about the county assessor's office, but we have... But we have, we have debated this. I've been here eight years, and I think we've debated it almost every year of the eight years I've been here. And if he doesn't ask, he doesn't get them. If he does ask, I think he has got them. He's gotten raises over the past. When he comes to us, I mean, I think we've always been pretty responsive to his office in the past. But anyway, and we'll let that debate a little later.
Mr. Chairman, as my name keeps getting mentioned here, my whole thing was not to, budget analysts and efficiency experts was not to create a committee, but was to have, say, two teams of four budget analysts, efficiency experts, go through the departments every year. You know, two teams, we have 52 departments, roughly, you know, something like that. So, you know, these two would go through 26 between July 1 and December 31. This other team would do the same thing in the other departments. And then they would switch next year, only to help the budget department understand what the budget needs are of that department, to go through and say, hey, what would make it, what would make your department operate better for you? To tell them, because then we have a better understanding when they do come ask for money, that the budget department says, oh, the finances, they do need that or they don't need that. Or to be able to give us a more informed decision, making policy. That's all I, that's all I've been talking about, not creating a committee to go through and, you know, kill it in committee. But just to have an ongoing discussion with those directors or those managers so that they understand what they've got. Because in some cases, and I know in some businesses, you know, someone have a bunch of money. They just, they don't know what to do with it, really. They don't know how to operate. Go and help them understand what they have and what they could do. And just to streamline the budget operation.
Yeah, and I'll say, you know, I tell departments and other electives, just because, you know, more money might not make you more efficient. There may be something in your process or in your workflow that might make it a little bit better. So, I mean, I wish, you know, everybody would kind of look at it like that and really make sure that they're utilizing their help in the best way they can. But we, it's not the board of supervisors' job to micromanage the county. I mean, we're really policy setters. We set the policy. If, you know, we tell, we want more money spent on roads, you know, we give Mr. Liu direction and he goes and he tries to figure out how we can get more money on roads. Our policies, that's really where we come through. If, and, and then we have little control over the other electives as far as if they come to us and they say, I need to run this department. I need this kind of money to run this department. We have to figure out how to get there. At the same time, we're still trying to manage the purse strings of this operation on a, on a day-to-day, month-to-month basis. So it is not a simple formula. It's not a simple thing for the board of supervisors. But we have, we have great staff that anytime I've asked a question, I've gotten a good answer. I typically try to direct that through the county manager and maybe the department head. At least where if I'm asking the department head directly, I copy the county manager on that request. And, and after that, you know, I feel like I'm prepared, I get enough information. If I don't get enough information, I do tell them that I'll be asking in the open meeting. I try to be very upfront with all the employees and the staff and departments going forward. But if there's some, if there's something that makes another department more efficient, I'm all ears. I want to know what it is. But I'll tell you, I, eight years, and I, there's some, probably some things we've done, I'd have to look back, that we've changed policy or procedure that's made it a little bit more streamlined. But I don't know.
Mr. Chairman, previously, did we have an audit committee in the county here?
We, they had an audit department, and there was a lot of intimidation that was put on the audit employees. So at a, at a point, we went to contract that out, that there's no, there's an arm's length of the audit committee that we've, HireProTivity is the company that we use. And it has made the, the whole process, and just another step in that process, what we did was we reached out to the cities and towns for their finance directors to sit on that committee, to review the audits as they come through. They bring us an audit report each year. And at times, if we say, hey, ProTivity, we think there might be a problem over here, we get, we can amend the calendar of the departments that are going to be audited, basically at any time, if we feel like there's an issue. So, and I can tell you, the arm's length, the distance that, that the contract out has been the, probably one of the best things we've ever done here at the county, because it really, it really makes it an independent audit of people that are not employees, not being intimidated by other departments. And we had that going on when we had the in-house. So that's my opinion. I think that after we got that in place, I think that was shared by the rest of my colleagues, because it was efficient. And ProTivity does meet with the board of supervisors, I believe, once a year to kind of talk about where are your concerns? Where, you know, do you see an area that you want audited that we, that we maybe haven't audited for a while? I think that, I think it's worked out very well. And again, like I said, if something comes up, we can, we can, we can shift that and get an audit in sooner than later.
And Mr. Chair, I'm not looking for an audit, that's a formal audit. I've never talked about that.
I understand.
I mean, mine is simply come to, well, let's see, let's go to Mr. Keller here and say, what would make your office run better? And, you know, it would be, gee, I need a calculator on my desk. I need a, you know, I need a second screen or a bigger, that's all I'm talking about, to go through and see what would, what would make an employee's job easier, to be more efficient? And just go through and say, oh, okay, so you do need that. Okay, that $800 screen or that, whatever. And that's all I'm looking at, just to go through and just help those departments see what could make them more efficient. And then, when you come to the, the budget time and somebody says, well, what do you want the tax rate to be? How, I don't know, gee, I mean, that one, I want that one. You know, pick the number. It would be nice to know what we need to spend, what we need to do in order to be able to set that tax rate. And if we can lower it, great. If we can lower it more, great. But we need to know with more information, is all I'm looking for. You know, what can make a department run more efficiently? And, and maybe that manager or someone below that manager's never come out and said, you know, what I'd really like is like a rubber foot mat to stand on, so I can stand at my desk. Okay, great, spend $20. And that person says, oh, man, this is great. And they can work, that's all, that's all I've ever promoted on this.
You know, I don't know, I know that we've, for efficiency, we've purchased a lot of the stand-up computer things. If the employees feel like that's, makes them more productive, I buy them. I'm good with that.
Right, but that's, but that's, but that's, that's all I'm talking about, is going through, making, making the employee more efficient, more comfortable to be able to work.
Sure, sure.
And that's all I've ever looked at.
So, Mr. Chairman, I agree with Supervisor McClure, but making, making it more routine, more formalized so that we're proactively going out and looking for issues. And so we can continue the discussion. I'll send the summary out.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Supervisor Goodman.
You know, when I first came into office, that was something that we had asked of our, our previous county manager, was that they, they actually chose an individual that actually went to department to department to see where there's some crossovers, where they could actually do some, like the grant writing. And where each department had grant writers. One thing that they looked at was, can we be more efficient by bringing, looking at one department for grant writing? And so those type of things that we did, and I think Leo, you were a part of that at that time as well. And it seemed to move forward. And so something along those lines, I think, is, would be sufficient under our management to go forward on those type of things. But actually looking at those type of redundancies that are done by, by department to where we can combine that, because I think that's what Supervisor Kavanaugh was talking about, doing those type of audits to where we can see where these redundancies are and ways to condense them and bring them in and, and from the wayside. And so, yeah, I would agree with something like that, but I would prefer it to be under our management as we give them direction on something like that.
Okay, well, I know, I'm all about efficiency anytime we can. So, and yeah, that's a great example. Thank you for bringing that up, because I'd forgotten about that. Anyway, so are we good? Okay, and so it brings us to item number 15, which is future agenda items. Does anybody have anything they want to add? And I, I think we're going to, already looking at the assessor's office. I think Mr. Liu indicated that that's actually going to be on the next agenda.
Right.
So I think that was obvious.
I have one.
Okay, thank you.
Now, there's been considerable amount of discussion and concern about this item. So I would like, I would like item B, that was previously listed on the September 1, 2021 Public Health Services District Agenda, to which I voted no, placed on a future Public Health Services District Board Agenda in October of 2021 for a more in-depth explanation and briefing by the county attorney and the appropriate public health officials. Let's see, to clear the air regarding the terms and conditions of that potential three-plus-million-dollar grant and whether that item can be, still be executed, and if so, for possible discussion.
Okay. I do have an agenda item. It'll probably be more of a, for discussion and no action-taking. But I want, we have, we have in place, and I don't know how many of you have copies of this, but we have the Pinal County Administrative Code, Article 1. It's the general provisions by which the board of supervisors govern this county by. So I want that on a future agenda item where we can, everybody have a copy of it and they can discuss it and can see some of the, the things that we really, we, that, how we're supposed to run this county. I think it's interesting that the board of supervisors only has one section. It's one paragraph with two bullet points. And all the rest of the stuff basically falls underneath the county manager and the clerk of the board. So, and again, it goes back to, we're policy setters. We set the policy and we set the tax rate and we spend the dollars. We're not to micromanage the county. It doesn't mean that we don't maybe inquire about how, how the policy or the procedure is written and, and used. But it does kind of, it does kind of set the guidelines for doing business in Pinal County or at the county. So if there's nothing else, this meeting's adjourned. Thank you.